Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Arvada City Council meeting for today, March 8th. Uh, sorry, not March 8th, I apologize, March 4th, 2024. I will call us to order and ask Councilmember Davis to lead us in a moment of silent reflection.
Yes, if you will join me for a moment of silent reflection, please. And now if you'll stand and please join council in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you so much. Ms. Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Simpson.
Here.
Mayor Proton Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Ferae.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, next we have approval of the minutes for February 5th and February 12th, 2024. Are there any corrections or comments from the council? Seeing none, those stand approved. Next, we have two presentations this evening. First, I will turn it over to Councilmember Pfeiffer for presentation of the after-prom checks.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Could I have the representatives from Arvada High School, Arvada West, Pomona High School, Rawson Valley, and Sandy Lake come to the podium? I'm not sure if the principals made it because I think this might be the first year the principals showed up all the 13 years I've done this, but is it all the principals? Assistant? Wow, we're amongst royalty in this prom. So I apologize for not dressing as snazzy as my other council members here. I came straight from work and was unable to put a tie on for this occasion. But I want to read something about the proms. This is my 13th year, not necessarily doing the, the, or the, the, the presentation, but this is a very important thing to our community that you all do for the safety and the security and the fun for our kids to do in a very suburb city. So I appreciate all your schools and your communities do for the kids during prom season. Each year at this time, the City Council acknowledges the partnership of school staff, parents, local businesses, Arvada School, resource officers, and others who join together to create a free, safe place for high school students to meet after prom. With elaborate decorations and creative themes, high schools are transformed into imaginative places for students to gather. All night and into the early morning, they can eat, play games, win prizes, and safely party with friends at no cost. These after-prom parties provide a safe alternative to high-risk behaviors. Each high school has a committee of parent volunteers who spend countless hours collecting donations, planning, preparing for, and staffing these events. It is estimated that each school hosts nearly 500 students, impacting nearly 2,500 teen, teens at the after-prom parties. Tonight, we recognize the committee's representative from our high, local high schools, who are committed to making these events a successful on the behalf of young people in Arvada and present each of these high schools with a cash donation to your after, uh, after-prom event. And again, I just, I, I can't stress how important this is, and I appreciate all of you showing up to show, uh, your dedication to, to this event. Our kids go through a lot this day and age, and you just make this place just a little bit better. So this is the first time I, they actually give me cash or checks in my hands. It's usually very rare, so this is like totally exciting to give actually real checks out. So I'm gonna come down and hand them out to you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Arvada High.
Thank you.
Pomona.
Thank you so much.
Stanley.
Yeah, Arvada West.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're appreciated.
Yeah, thank you.
They were taking a picture.
Great.
Oh, can we go this way?
Sure. I don't.
All right. Thank you all so much for what you do for our youth. All right, next, we have a presentation by Jefferson County, sorry, wrong one. Oh, yeah, the presentation by the Jefferson County School District Superintendent Tracy Dorland, state of, the state of the Jefferson County Public Schools. Superintendent Dorland, please.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Simpson, thank you so much for having us on your agenda. My name is Tracy Dorland. I'm the Superintendent of Jeffco Public Schools, and I'm joined by two of my colleagues, Ms. Lisa Rilu, who's our Chief of Staff, and Mr. Jeff Gatlin, who's our Chief Operating Officer. I'm gonna begin this evening and just share with you some basic information about the school district, what we're up to these days and how it's going. And, um, Mr. Gatlin is going to join me in a few minutes here and also talk about something I know is on the minds of all of the cities that we work with as a school district, which is our property disposition process for some of the schools that have been closed. Um, and so I am looking to see if maybe there's a slide behind me. There we go. This, uh, slide shows a big-picture overview of where we're headed and what we're focused on in Jeffco Public Schools. You can see here the vision, mission, and values that have been set by our Board of Education, including our efforts to be a thriving district where all students achieve their biggest dreams, and to make sure that we're providing a world-class education that prepares all Jeffco students for bright and successful futures locally and globally. Our Board of Education has also established the values that you see in the blue box. And we have four priorities as part of our, our strategic plan that we've put together in support of the board's vision, mission, and values. Uh, Our Learner's Our Future is all about our students and how we make sure to provide them, uh, a culture of instructional excellence on a daily basis and really provide extraordinary student experiences. We also have a category of focus around our people, our strength. We're one of the largest employers in the county, and we strive to be also one of the best. Our operations, our foundation, is all about efficient and effective, um, operations and making sure that the operations on a day-to-day basis support our teachers and our students in the classroom so that they can learn. And then our community is our legacy. We cannot do the work alone in Jeffco Public Schools, and we know partners like city councils, um, and nonprofits, and parents, and many others in our community are part of our work in making sure that we can be the best we can be for kids every day. And then you'll see here in the purple box, the major initiatives that we're focused on this year. Um, it guides all of our priorities, and really, this year, we're focused on student outcomes and helping our school leaders and our teachers have high-quality instructional materials, um, and professional learning, and a focus on making sure students are learning on a daily basis. Major initiative number two is to make sure our central services are organized in a way that supports students and high-quality outcomes for our students. And so what does this mean on the ground, and what is the work that we've been up to? Jeffco Thrives 2025 is our strategic plan, and, um, we believe in Jeffco that we are a leader, building a community of leaders. We have, uh, 12 comprehensive high schools and seven of our charter schools that graduated students above 90% in the 2223 school year. It's a huge highlight for us. We're very proud of that. We have 1,000 students enrolled in our career and technical education programs. We have more than 5,500 students who are, um, concurrently enrolled in college classes and earning, um, over 29,000 college credits, which is saving our families almost $5 million in tuition savings. And in 2023, we had 785 students enrolled in a work-based learning course that included opportunities for them around internships and apprenticeships. We know that, um, our students thrive when they can have career-connected, uh, learning, and their opportunities to study, um, and engage in learning that is related to exploration of careers is something we're really proud of in Jeffco. We have implemented a core literacy resource, so all schools, especially our elementary schools, now have a high-quality reading, uh, curriculum. We have new resources for math, and they will be completely implemented in all schools by 2025. We are addressing enrollment declines. I know you've been aware of the, um, difficult decisions our board has had to make around school closures, um, and we have launched our property disposition process. And so with that, I'd like to welcome my colleague, Mr. Gatlin, um, up here to talk to you a little bit more about that process.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for giving me a little time to talk through this with you tonight. Uh, I did want to point out our process that's on the, on the slide right now, uh, that was really created to provide, uh, transparency and to also make sure that there was public engagement along the way as we were working through, uh, our property disposition. Currently, we have two properties going through this process right now, one of which being Allendale, uh, that might be of particular interest to you. Uh, Allendale is getting close to the end of this process, where we are, uh, we have received offers for the property, and we're working with, uh, bringing those, uh, offers to our Board of Education to discuss, uh, next steps with the offers that we receive. So we are hoping to have some clarity pretty soon around, uh, Allendale and, um, and what's gonna happen with that property. I did want to point out, too, that, uh, we're, we are gonna be bringing another round of properties to our board to recommend for surplus. That hasn't been finalized yet, uh, but there are multiple properties in Arvada that, uh, that you know were closed, that we'll go through this process. So we'll make sure to communicate and update when the, the surplus recommendations are made, when they've been approved by our board, and engage with, uh, with the city on that. One of the things that we learned in this process, and we created, uh, a green box uh, through this process, is how do we want to handle this if a municipality expressed interest in, uh, a property? Uh, this process didn't really work well for that. So we created a municipality interest process, uh, that really allows for a pathway if you municipality came to us and said, hey, we really have an interest in a particular property, to give us a process to follow, to make sure that we're, uh, that we're being transparent and that we're being, uh, uh, following our process, really with a few possible outcomes: a short-term lease, a long-term lease, or, uh, purchaser-sale of a property. Uh, so that was definitely something that we learned in this process and that, uh, that we're, we're willing to entertain if a municipality is certainly interested in one of our properties. Uh, we do, like I said, we do have, uh, Peck, Parr, Thompson, Fitzmorris, and then after this school year, Arvada-Kate, uh, to be considered for surplus. So those are the properties remaining in Arvada that we'll be working through, and like I mentioned, you will be, uh, kept in the loop on status of those as we work them through whichever process they go through. Yeah, that's pretty much where we are with disposition, uh, and when we're done with our presentation, if you have any other questions about that, I'd be happy to, to answer those.
Mr. Marriott, I see your lights on. Would you like that now, or would you like to hold your questions?
I would. Mr. Gatlin, I'd like to ask you a question right now. So I think we have a unique situation here in Arvada, I believe, with Arvada-Kate. And the unique situation is, is that, um, some time ago, more than a decade ago, uh, the city partnered with the school district to build a park on school property. And we spent some millions of dollars of our taxpayers' money on that. Um, and I think it sets up a unique situation. I don't know if you have any more or many of those across your district and particularly across the properties you're looking at surplusing out. But I just want to call to your attention that unique situation. I also want to stress to you that because it is a unique situation, this isn't a situation where it would be fair or equitable to give the private sector a shot at that first. And I understand, you know, this municipal disposition process is new to me. It's the first time I've seen this. Um, but, but that, you know, we, it would not be equitable at all to anybody, you included, um, for that Wolf Park to do anything except remain Wolf Park. And so regardless of your process here or your process there, that's gotta be a given, that one way or another, that that will remain that way. Um, I think, I think you would get just significant pushback from this part of Jeffco if, if anything other than that were let to happen, and you guys are 100% in control of that. You know, that, that, that nobody else has control other than you. So I just want to call that out, make sure you realize our expectation is that it's incumbent on you to figure that out and solve that, and we, of course, will be your partners and play a, play a part in that, but under no circumstances can that end up in any other disposition part. Now, the rest of the property, uh, you know, I'd leave that up to you, but, but the park itself, because of the previous investment that our taxpayers made, it's very important that that stays that way.
I appreciate you mentioning that, and that is something that we are planning on talking to, uh, the city about. That property in particular is unique, that, uh, the school district owns not only the school, but the park itself. There is an IGA in place right now around the use of that park, so that's something that we'll absolutely have conversations about and make sure that, um, that we're talking through that. I appreciate you mentioning that. Yep.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Well, so I represent the west side, so a lot going on out that way. I think you, 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 you mentioned quite a few, but I think those are mostly on the east side of the city. One concern I have sometimes is, and, and I come from a different part of the United States where the schools, elementary schools are as big as the high schools now. When I went back home and looked, I'm like, holy cow, the school is still thriving. But they also didn't put schools two blocks from each other. They put schools a couple miles away from each other. Uh, when you go through this process, um, are you looking at how to better utilize so you don't come this ebb and flow and disruption of our communities? Because they are staples to our communities, but if they ebb and flow so frequently, it, it does create an instability for us as a community. That's one. And secondly with the, that being said, you have to also be cautiously about the west, uh, part of Arvada or the northern part of Jefferson County. You are closing a school up in Coal Creek Canyon, I believe. Was that one of the ones I had listed? Or no? Or was I not supposed to say that? I don't even know.
No, no, it's, it's on the list.
It's too late now. It's out in polls there, but, um, no, but you know, there's some consolidation out there with Low, uh, and you have K through eight, um, you have the Three Creeks. But then there's also Lyden Rock had some property set aside in that area, right, Rawson Valley and so forth, and then, um, you know, West Woods and, and everything else. So knowing that you're trying to do this ebb and flow, uh, thing, um, what does that mean for our community? What is your long-term strategy to, to minimize that ebb and flow?
Yeah, you know, one of the things we're doing right now is we're, uh, we're working with a consultant on doing a boundary study, um, that's really looking at boundaries and enrollment and capacities throughout the district, uh, in addition to, um, what we've done in the past. And so really, that diving in, and, and, you know, we, we, we understand the impact of, of closing a school is significant and, um, certainly don't take that lightly. But at the same time, you know, we, we want to make sure that the facilities that we have are best supporting the kids that we have, and really, that's what we're diving into right now. And we're particularly looking into, uh, the northwest part of Arvada, knowing that, uh, you know, that's one of our higher areas slated for development and growth, and just how we handle that and how we accommodate that. Uh, so it's very clearly on our radar that we're diving into that. Um, we, you know, I don't know if I have a, a firm answer of what that looks like right now, but that's certainly something that we're, uh, that we're spending a lot of time and energy on.
Well, and hopefully we spend some, definitely some time on it. I mean, we have 650 homes about to be broken ground right there again, and, and I believe we do a referral on any of these developments to the, the school district. And I'm not saying it happens this way or not, but I hope we all take a little bit extra time to either have a good thoughtful push-pack relationship during those referrals that say, is this gonna break the bank for you or not, or is it gonna, you're gonna have to add another wing to Three Creeks, or, you know, is Michael John not getting its population up to its, you know, there's a lot of dynamics, but we as a city that is processing these, uh, land development decisions, uh, have an impact to our partners. And if, if we're not getting the clear feedback on that, that ebb and, we, we, we affect that ebb and flow, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I just encourage, and I don't see all the responses back from when you refer back, but hopefully there's some thoughtfulness around that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I see no more lights. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm gonna hand it back to Superintendent Dorland.
Great. Thank you for the thoughtful questions, and, um, thank you for the partnership. Um, the closing of the schools was one of the most challenging things that I've ever done in my career, and I think with the boundary study and a future, um, capital plan, we will have a much better answer to your questions, um, and so I appreciate that. Uh, I will say that while we expect to, um, sell some of these properties and reinvest those dollars into the buildings that we continue to operate, as you know, um, it's expensive to operate, to own and operate buildings. And so the money that, uh, the, the, the disposition process will bring into the school district will go right back into buildings that we are operating and, um, making them, you know, warm, safe, and dry, and wonderful places for kids to, to learn. Um, but it doesn't solve all of our funding issues. Um, and in Jeffco Public Schools, we are behind our neighboring peer districts in our revenue and therefore in what we're able to provide to our staff with compensation and our students with some of our programming. So I just want to take a moment and share a little bit about how schools are funded in the state of Colorado. We have three main components of our revenue. The first is our local share, that you all, um, I think are really intimately, uh, aware of in terms of local property taxes. The state share, um, the, the state runs a very complicated funding formula, and at the end of that formula, it spits out a number, which is Jeffco's total program. They run that formula for every school district in the state. When our local share increases, say our property taxes go up, our total program does not. We get the same total program based on the state's formula every year, which is a little counterintuitive. Um, many people ask me, well, my property taxes went up, so aren't you getting more revenue in the school district? The answer is no. All that happens is our local funding increasing, is that sort of green part of the picture up there. Um, the state's share will then decrease to get to our total program. And so regardless of how much our local residents are paying in property taxes, we are generating the same revenue for our schools. In addition to the local share and the state share that make up our total program, we also have mill levy overrides, similar to what you all have, I think, the authority to do as well, and we have passed some mill levy overrides in the past, uh, with previous boards of education over the last 20 years. Unfortunately, Jeffco Public Schools has not tied those mill levy overrides to inflation. Other school districts surrounding us have. And so when you take a look at our mill levy overrides, you can see the year that the overrides were passed on this chart, and the dollar amount in millions that we are now collecting. So the mill levy override that was passed in 2000, 99, 2000, was worth 25 million, and today, we're collecting 25 million, 24 years later. You can also see, um, that if it had been adjusted for inflation, um, we would probably be around 55 million more in revenue, um, as a school district. And as I stated before, other districts around Jeffco, um, our front-range peers, who we compete with, uh, to provide high-quality services, for high-quality teaching staff, bus drivers, all kinds of employees, they have, um, tied their inflation, their mill levy overrides to inflation in the past, and so they're bringing in more, more revenue above and beyond their total program than we are here in Jeffco, and it really is a challenge. Um, we've been able to provide high-quality, um, raises for our employees the last several years, um, but it, it's going to, um, with our declining enrollment, become more and more challenging to do so. Um, you can see here some of our market analysis compensation. So about 88% of the district's budget is spent on salary, because we're in the people business, and most of what we do is hire people to serve students. And so you can see here, um, that our teacher salaries, our paraprofessionals, our independent support paraprofessionals, like a special education para, um, is, is behind, um, the starting, mid, and maximum, uh, pay rates of neighboring districts. Um, like, for example, a new teacher at a BA, bachelor's degree in step one, coming out of school, coming into the teaching profession in Jeffco, um, is about 3.5% below average starting pay in the front range when compared. So, and, and it's across all of our employee groups. It's not just teachers. Um, it's our educational support professionals, as well as some of our administrators. We're just struggling to keep up with our neighbors. What is fascinating is that, um, again, as I mentioned, salary and benefit accounts for about 85% of our overall budget, and 81% of our employees live in Jefferson County. And so an investment in Jeffco employees is an investment in the local community. By the way, um, I have data here that's just interesting. I think you'll find fascinating. Of that 81% of employees who live in Jeffco, 23% of them live in the city of Arvada. So lots of, uh, Jeffco employees who live right here in the city of Arvada. And so you can see some things here, just more information about what we're focused on, related to the most important thing we do, which is, um, Our Learner's Our Future, and how we're working toward, um, making sure that we're focused on student outcomes and central services and support of student outcomes. Um, and so we're really appreciative of the time that, um, we were able to present to you today, and we're still here, happy to answer some questions if you have any to ask, um, but really grateful that we able, we were able to provide some context and information about the school district for you this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Actually, maybe you could do a quick spill. Um, you know, taxes have gone up, and you're, and there's closing of schools, and so some people might say, well, boy, our taxes went up, which you explained, but then all this marijuana tax that came out there, where did that happen? I'm sure Tabor has something to play in this, but at the end of the day, is there some sort of, um, elevator pitch that you would have given to explain that to the citizens who say, well, what's all these statewide fundings that we approved, and why are you still in this dilemma of closing schools, and then taxes are still going up? So from a taxpayer, they're kind of confused right now with, with all these tax increases, and so maybe, and having some of the highest mills on our tax bills is the school district. Uh, maybe you can maybe explain maybe what's going on there so that...
Sure. So the, one of the things that the state of Colorado does not provide any funding for is capital in school systems. And so anytime we want to invest in a roof or a new building, um, we either have some offset, for example, that's in partnership with a developer, for example, um, or, uh, we use general fund money, which is part of that total program, and we transfer it into a cap reserve. Or we pass a general obligation bond. Um, you can also pass some mill levy overrides, um, to support capital improvements. Um, the marijuana money, um, actually goes toward a program at the state level called the BEST grant. And you can imagine, you know, in Jeffco Public Schools, we have passed bonds to support capital investment and the needs, um, the facility needs in our buildings. But places that are very rural in the state of Colorado very much struggle, um, in this arena of paying for capital, maintaining their buildings, building new buildings when necessary, and it's very expensive. And so the BEST grant is supported by the taxation on marijuana, and it is a grant-funded program that school districts apply to, and then they receive sort of partial offset for some of their capital investments. Jeffco has been a recipient of some of the BEST grant funds in the past, and we are currently involved in writing a grant, um, to, to, to BEST right now, to support our investment in, uh, rebuilding Fletcher Miller, which is, um, a school that supports, uh, many of our special needs students. Uh, and so that's where the, the marijuana tax money is going. Um, and you know, we, we in Jeffco also have declining enrollment, and we're funded on a per pupil, so that formula that I talked to you about, that spits out our total program, we average our five, uh, five years of our enrollment, which actually does help us sort of ease into our new enrollment realities. Um, and so, yeah, but the total program is the total program. So when, when, um, property taxes go up, we basically just pay more of the local share of the total program than the state does in their backfill.
Do you any, by any chance, ever have the, uh, state demographer come and talk to you all?
Yeah, she's really awesome. Uh, she's, I really like her a lot. She's funny. Um, she's a great presenter, and we have had her speak to, her and her staff have come to speak to our board. I've recommended to the Colorado Department of Education, State Board, that they talk with her. I think they have had a recent presentation from her. The changing demographics in school-age population in the state of Colorado, and frankly, over the, across the nation, is, is interesting. Um, people are having fewer kids.
Yeah, I was just gonna also highlight that Jefferson County is gonna have the highest decline in population in the next 10 years. So it, I, I think there's a real story to be said if you mix in the demographics to your story. Um, so anyways...
You know, the, the other question that people might ask is, you just closed all these schools. Aren't you saving money from that, and so why are you still behind other districts? Um, we did save money from the closing of the schools, um, but again, we're getting this benefit of a five-year average, and the, the funding that we're saving is really going back into sustaining the expenditures that we have today. Um, and it's just not enough, right, for the kind of investment that we really should be making in safety, security, um, relevant high school experiences for our kiddos, as well as, um, obviously, the biggest chunk of our budget, which is compensating... as obviously the biggest chunk of our budget, which is compensating those incredible people who work with our kids every day.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I just have a couple of questions. One is, in the discussions with the demographer, has there been an update with the increase of immigrants that are coming to our state and our county about how and how you all are planning to structure school services to provide for that growing population?
Sure. So we have seen an increase in newcomer students to Jeffco. It is nothing like what you might see on the news in a sanctuary city like Denver. And so we have pockets where we have seen increased enrollment from students who are new to the country. We are working right now to develop and pilot newcomer programming and services for our students, both academically, but also wraparound services for their families as we go into next year. In Jeffco, we do have, I would say, less concentrations of poverty and migrant families. And so we have to support multiple locations with that type of work in order to make sure that we're serving those who really need it. And so we are seeing an increase, but it's nothing like what you're seeing in like Denver.
And it doesn't really do anything about the overall decrease over time of student population, like there's nothing forecasted.
It's not, it's not offsetting. Our decline is much greater than the increase we're seeing in any migrant student increased population.
Okay. And then my second question is just a small administrative thing. I am the Jeffco school liaison to meet with the school on a quarterly basis, and I was just elected this past November, so just have taken on this role. And we're just not really sure at the city, like, when that meeting is supposed to happen. We know it happens on a quarterly basis, but we've just had a lot of back and forth and not a meeting set yet. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention to make sure that we get those quarterly meetings restarted.
That sounds good. I know they've been working on that. I don't know, I haven't gotten an update about where it is, but I know it's been tricky to get it scheduled. So we'll continue working on that with the city and make sure we can get those calendared.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Proton Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation this evening. Really appreciate it. As you can imagine, I get lots of questions about schools in my district that are being closed, and of course I direct them to the district and, you know, try to clarify with residents that, you know, we as a city aren't in charge of those properties as you are. But I guess if you could help me better articulate to the residents as they raise these concerns in terms of when the properties are going to be going up for sale in their neighborhood that was a school, they're very concerned about what that's going to become and how that's going to impact their local community. What can I tell them that's part of the process that they can be directly engaged in that school in their neighborhood?
Yeah, so when we make a decision or the board makes a decision to surplus a property, we start the process that you have in your presentations. You can refer back to that. But one of the things that we do is we have a citizens committee that is part of the process. And with every property, we add ad hoc members from that neighborhood to the committee. So for example, when we did Allen Dale, and we're still in the middle of that process, we have members of the Allen Dale neighborhood, the properties right around the school, who are on the committee representing. We also have neighborhood meetings, we have meetings at the school. We've worked on ways to get the word out, not just to families that might have students in our schools, but community around the school that might not have, many of our citizens, as you guys know, don't have students in our schools. And so we've been working on making sure we can publish the meeting notices, and those meetings have been well attended for the two that we've gone through already. And having those ad hoc members, I think, has been really important for the most local community around the school to be represented in the process.
Thank you. That's very helpful. So for the future schools in my district, for example, and the rest of the city, where, just direct them to your website if they want to be part of the ad hoc committee representation. How do folks engage in that process specifically?
You can email directly Mr. Gatlin, and we can get you his contact info, and maybe we can put Janelle on there or something to kind of help you track. And then there's also information on our website about property disposition, and if they go there, they can find out a lot of information, including how to express interest in being involved.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I actually have one question. So the Bond Initiative voters passed a handful of years ago. We've obviously seen numerous improvements to some of our facilities here, so thank you for that. I'm very pleased by that. I'm curious what the outstanding fund balances might still be and what plans for those dollars are particularly here in Arvada could be.
Yeah, so the, we're winding that program down, which is really exciting. I mean, it's been a ton of investment across the entire district. We do have two schools, that two new schools that were contemplated in the 2018 bond. One is in the Red Rocks Ranch area over in Lakewood, and the other is up in northwest Arvada, in the Leyden Rock. You mentioned the property, and we, our board, I think, just accepted a land parcel for that, for that property. So those funds are still there. And then for the most part, the majority of the other funds are allocated for additional projects. Our board recently, this fall, made some decisions around additional investment in Wheat Ridge High School, for example, that really needed more than what was originally contemplated. They also, as I mentioned before, have allocated some of the bond funds, some capital reserve funds, as well as some fund balance to the rebuild of Fletcher Miller, which is personally one of my most exciting projects to see take shape. And so the majority of the funds are allocated.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfeifer.
I just want to conclude with a comment, not a question. First and foremost, these are tough challenges that you have to go through, and this is not the first time we've seen the school district go through some of these challenging times. And so that's why I really encourage and underscore your kind of leveling of the ebb and flows of it. And hopefully you find, the state's a little unique with charter schools, and it creates an open enrollment, which creates a challenge for the school district. So I understand your challenge. I also want to stress, going through this is a lot for you, but I also want to stress the fact that we've treasured a partnership with the school district for many, many years. And to Councilmember Ambrose's comment, I want to continue that and make sure our quarterly meetings happen because that's where we solve issues around a table, and we can come together to help each other through these times. Additionally, our partnership has always been strong, and we appreciate it through, you know, the pool, which will draw a lot of attention to this area of the state since this will be only one of two diving platforms, thanks to a nonprofit that helped us with it. But those quality of athletic services that you provide and art and other things create the quality of life that we expect. So I just wanted to stress the importance of our partnership and continued partnership with the city and that we work together to help through these times. So again, thank you.
Thank you. That's why we're so excited that we could be here this evening and at least engage in some dialogue, and we will follow up on the quarterly meetings and try to get those on the books.
Excellent. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is public comment. This will be public comment on any items that are not on this evening's agenda. As you come up, I'm going to ask a few simple things. First, please direct your comments to us at the council, not to your fellow attendees in the room or whoever might be watching at home. This is your opportunity to address us, your representatives. And in addition, everybody who comes forward, I would ask you to state your name and your address for the record. And also, in the interest of time, if you agree with the person who came forward, please, any unique comments or if you feel strongly, please do share. But if you just want to echo the sentiment, ditto is also acceptable. We understand. So with that, I will call forward Craig Myers.
Appreciate you listening to me tonight. I'm here hoping you'll keep, sorry about that. I'm here hoping you guys will keep my dad's name on the pool. Three or four generations of families have enjoyed the Myers Pool. I currently live in Centennial. My kids run swim teams down there, and when I talk to the elite swimmers, ask them if they've been to Myers Pool, all of them say they have been and they love it. And, you know, then I tell them proudly that it was named after my dad. In reading about the new pool, I see it's a joint venture between Jeffco Schools, City of Arvada and Apex. Looking at all of you guys, most of you guys probably weren't even born when my dad passed away in 1977. So you don't know that my dad spent 30 years at Arvada High School, teacher, coach, assistant principal. So there's the Jeffco Schools portion of it. Apex, it was North Jeffco back then. He ran their summer swim program overseeing the three pools that were open in the summer and their ski program for close to 20 years. City of Arvada, he was on the planning commission and the director of the planning commission for over 10 years. So where are you going to find another person who had ties to every entity that can be part of this new organization? So I don't think you can. He was very special to Arvada, had a lot of friends, but he'd been gone for a long time. People forget. And I hope history means something and his name can stay on the pool. That's my two cents worth.
Thank you very much for coming and sharing with us.
Thank you.
All right. Next I have Wendy J. Roff.
Or Amy Trevin. Yes, sorry. Actually Wendy just wants to ditto me, so if she dittoed first, it'd be kind of strange. So sorry. Do you mind if I go first?
Absolutely not, Ms. Trevin. Amy Trevin, address, please.
Thank you. Yes, I live in Arvada, 8004. So good evening, everyone. My name is Amy. The reason I'm here this evening is to do a, hopefully relatively simple thing, which is ask all of you to condemn any hate speech here at the city or anybody that comes to you to make a public comment making hate speech. I'm sure you're all aware that recently there have been events in other local municipalities where groups come and speak out against people who are newly arrived in our communities and say very hateful things. And so I'm here to stand up for those people who have newly arrived in our community and to ask that if there are others who come and speak out against them, for you to do whatever you can to shut down any hate speech they might offer to a public comment. And so I'm hoping that as a community here in Arvada, that we can do that, that we can make it clear that we welcome anyone who wants to be here, who wants to have a new life, who wants to have, who wants to work, who wants to provide for their family, and that we welcome them. And we say, you are welcome here, and we're not going to stand for anybody that says anything hateful towards you. I think, you know, I, in my own experience and knowing where my ancestors come from, they are immigrants to the United States. They came here in the mid 19th century from Ireland by way of Australia randomly and crazily enough, but, you know, it was a family who was struggling with poverty and with not being able to eat and not being able to have a safe space for their own family. And so they came here, and they settled in the Midwest and then the South, and then eventually here I came to Arvada about 10, 15 years ago now. I'm dating myself. But, you know, I think a lot of us here probably have some immigrant history, and I would ask that you do that research to find out where your family came from. It provides hopefully a space where you can be compassionate towards others who also make that journey here, even to Arvada. And, you know, I think one of the things that's great about Arvada is that we are all in this together. We are all here, and we are all trying to do a better job. And if we see these other people who are newly arrived in our community as other members of the human race, hopefully that provides some sense of humanity that we see in them and that we can ask them, hey, what can I do to help you? If I have space to help you, what can I do? And in my own experiences in talking with these individuals who are newly arrived in our community, all they want to do is work. They just want to help out. They want to help their kids. They want to have a job. They want to get a house. They want to do what they can. And I think study after study empirically shows that immigrants actually make our community better. They lift the economy, they lift our values, and my time has expired, so that's all I have, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Trevin. Wendy? And Ms. Roff, you did not provide an address on the form, so I will need you to provide your full address.
My full, okay, thank you. Wendy Roff, 781 Wild Rose Place, Erie, Colorado, sorry, 80516.
All right.
Ditto.
Thank you. And next we will have Darlon Chang, and I will also request from the audience, no applause, please.
Good evening, city council members. I'm Darlon Chang at 6876 Juniper Court in Arvada. In addition to being a resident, I'm also the lead of the environment team for the Arvadans for Progressive Action, or APA. I've given a public comment before that the members of APA know that without a livable climate, no other progressive cause matters. But at the same time, sufficient climate action won't be possible this decade without progressive causes. And today I'm here to talk about the cause of a resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. Later is too late for the children and innocents who are starving and dying from the violence that has resulted in 28,000 Palestinians and 1,400 Israelis dying between October and February. Just as later is too late for climate action to avert famine and fossil-fueled extreme weather disasters that contribute to military conflicts, power grabs and war. Given that extreme weather is already locked in because of exponentially increasing fossil fuel emissions, especially over my lifetime, the last thing we need is for countries to be at each other's throats, fighting over land and remaining resources. We need cooperation the likes of which humanity has never before seen on the climate crisis, and that's the greatest threat the likes of which humanity has never seen before. If this sounds like the plot of an epic historical or fantasy drama like Game of Thrones, that's because this story resonates in our bones. And once again, we must rise together to meet the true threat to us all. This city council has the power to join other cities across the US in calling for our federal government to support immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, sending an important signal that power and resource grabs will not be condoned and supported. Weapons in the Middle East and globally must be reduced as history has shown again and again that governments with more weapons are more inclined to use violence to get their way instead of diplomacy. In addition, this city council has the power to support all of Arvada's residents in condemning all forms of racism and discrimination, including antisemitism and Islamophobia. Too often conflicts lead to more conflict, and Arvada needs to be a leader in bringing this cycle of conflict to an end so that we can focus on cooperating to take on the climate crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Ben McCoo. Ben, did I say that correctly?
It's Ben McCoo.
McCoo, I apologize.
It's all right. Yeah, my name is Ben. I live in District 4, 8004. And I would also like to comment on the current migrant crisis in our area. Leviticus 19:18 is a well-known Bible verse, "You shall love your neighbor as yourself." In context, it's referring to literal neighbors, people of your own nation. But less well-known is just a few verses later in Leviticus 19, verses 33 and 34. It says, "When a stranger sojourns with you in your land, you shall do him no wrong. You shall treat the stranger who sojourns with you as the native among you, and you shall love him as yourself." The point is that we must care about the sojourner just as much as we care about our neighbor. We can debate about how open or closed our borders should be, but the starving person sleeping with her toddler in a tent off of I-25 in sub-zero temperatures is not a policy, but a person. She's a person who literally walked here with that toddler on her back all the way from Venezuela, enduring these miserable, life-threatening conditions because they're still better than what she was enduring at home. She wants to play by the rules, including waiting five months for a work permit before she can earn a single legal dollar, but she's not going to tell her toddler to wait for dinner for five months. And the question before me is, what would I do to protect my family? And then according to what I just said in the Bible, I must do that exact same thing for her. People of good faith can differ on policy and whether she should be here, but the fact of the matter is that she is here. And the... And the thing that's incumbent upon me is to show her the sort of hospitality that I would need if I were in her shoes. Council members, she's not looking for a government handout. She's looking for a legal work permit so that she can work. I'm not asking you to earmark any of the city's budget for assistance programs necessarily. I'm just asking you to stand behind local businesses like Actors that are hiring people with legal work permits and yet are still facing flack all the same. I'm asking you to stand behind the local nonprofits, churches, grassroots groups, working hard to help these folks survive. Making Arvada a hospitable place for the sojourner, for the newcomer, is a win for them. It's a win for small business, and it's ultimately a win for all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Bruce Morrison.
Yeah, I'm Bruce Morrison. I'm the, I live at sixty-five twenty-one West Sixty-Ninth Way. And I am the lead for the Arvadans for Progressive Action Anti-War Action Team. First, I'd like to thank the council members for all the work they do in our community and for listening to our testimony. I'm here to talk about the situation in Gaza and the need for a permanent ceasefire. As you know, the situation in Gaza is, is dire. There are over one point eight million refugees. Thousands more will die from lack of clean water, food, and medicines. Imagine living without clean water. I don't know how you do that. The violence is also destabilizing the region, and only a permanent ceasefire will stop the bloodshed and instability. Polls consistently show that over sixty percent of the people support a ceasefire. Jewish Americans support a ceasefire fifty percent to thirty-four percent in a recent poll. So the question is not whether we need a ceasefire. The question is, why are we coming to the city council of Arvada to ask for a ceasefire? For one thing, Arvada taxpayers spend one point eight million dollars a year to fund our policy in, in that area that contributes to the violence. And Congress has, if they approve the new package, it will be six point eight million more dollars from, from their Arvada taxpayers. The other reason and why we didn't come to you a long time ago is that Congress is refusing to act to reduce the violence, to call for a permanent ceasefire or even reduce funding for, for the violence. We have called and called. It's now up to city councils to raise their voice for a ceasefire, and there's precedence for this. Many cities, over seventy cities around the country have passed ceasefire resolutions, including Glemont Springs in Colorado. I'm kind of running out of time here. Okay. The Biden administration is trying to negotiate a temporary ceasefire. We need a permanent ceasefire. Temporary ceasefire means that the violence will soon start up again and thousands more will die. Passing this resolution will, will not immediately end the violence, but it will mean that you join a growing movement. And this movement, if it's successful, will save thousands of lives. So please support a permanent ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Joyce Richardson.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Simpson. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Joyce Richardson, and I've lived in Arvada for thirty-five years, and I live at sixty-five twenty-one West Sixty-Ninth Way. I'm speaking you, speaking to you tonight about the resolution that will soon come before you, which asks the Arvada City Council to sign and forward a resolution to our congressional delegation supporting a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. While I know that the city of Arvada does not deal with foreign policy, it does represent the residents of Arvada. As taxpayers, Arvadans send a lot of money to the federal government. The U.S. currently sends one point eight million dollars of Arvada tax money to Israel per year for military spending, which is being used to decimate the population of the Gaza Strip and to make incursions into the West Bank. Without a permanent ceasefire, there's no hope that the combatants can come to the table and reach an ability to understand each other's points of view or grievances. I'm asking the council to help those of us who try to change the minds in Washington, D.C., to help us by strengthening our voices by signing the, and forwarding the resolution calling for a cease, permanent ceasefire in Arvada. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Richardson. Alyssa Trumbull.
Good evening, Mayor Simpson and council. My name's Alyssa Trumbull. I'm an Arvada resident in District Two, eight zero 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 three. I'm here tonight to also speak in support of the resolution for a permanent ceasefire put forth by Arvadans for Progressive Action. While you may think such a resolution to be immaterial at the city level, support for this resolution shows your commitment as our elected officials to human rights. Since October seventh, more than thirty thousand Palestinians have been killed, including more than fourteen thousand children, and nearly seventy-two, seventy-two thousand people have been injured in Gaza alone. More than one point eight million Palestinians have been internally displaced in the continuation of the catastrophe that began in nineteen forty-eight. Those who have been displaced have been deprived access to adequate food, water, shelter, sanitation, and medical assistance. In January, the International Court of Justice ordered Israel to implement six provisional measures to protect Palestinians in Gaza against a real risk of genocide. This interim ruling included measures for Israel to prevent genocidal acts and punish the direct and public incitement to genocide and to take immediate and effective steps to ensure the provision of humanitarian assistance to civilians in Gaza. In spite of these measures, Israel continues to indiscriminately slaughter Palestinians while manufacturing hunger and malnutrition and denying Palestinians humanitarian aid as forms of collective punishment. When employees of the United National Relief and Works Agency were accused of participating in the October seventh attack on Israel, Felipe Lazarene, the commissioner general of the agency, swiftly fired the remaining employees who had been accused. Nevertheless, the United States voted in the U.N. to suspend four hundred and fifty million dollars in UNRWA funds. The U.S. has participated in creating crisis levels of hunger throughout the occupied Palestinian territories. Lazarene noted last week that in a place that has never before really encountered hunger, nearly now, now nearly all Gazans are facing these crisis levels of hunger. The performative delivery this week of aid packages from the U.S. government is not enough. Annually, the United States continues to fund the Israeli military, providing deadly weapons which are used to kill Palestinians in Gaza and the West Bank. On average, seventy-six million dollars in Colorado tax dollars go to support Israel, and as you have heard, one point eight million of those dollars come from Arvada taxes alone. Since October seventh, additional munitions and funding have been sent to Israel from the United States. Last week, Representative Pedersen signed a letter calling for a pause in fighting to allow humanitarian aid to enter Gaza. Yesterday, Vice President Harris voiced support for a six-week ceasefire. This is not enough. We, as constituents, need to send a message to our legislators in Washington that we support a permanent ceasefire. An immediate ceasefire by all parties remains essential, and as Agnes Kellmar, the Secretary General of Amnesty International, has said, "Although this is not ordered by the International Court of Justice, it is the most effective condition to implement the provisional measures and end unprecedented civilian suffering." I urge your support of this resolution to send a strong message to our legislators in Washington and to the Biden administration that we, the residents of Arvada, will not be silent in the face of genocide. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Hal Rager. Mr. Rager, did I get your name correct?
Yes, and I appreciate that. It's not Reagan, it's not Roger, it's Rager. Yes. This one at the chin, I think. You can hear me okay? Okay, I too, and from Arvada and from Progressive Action, I'm also part of Arvadans for Social Justice. And I am here to add a little bit before I say ditto to the, the rest of this stuff. But one of the things that really annoys me about what is happening there is half of my family came here when the British tried to kill us and the potatoes stopped growing. The other half came here in the early thirties when the Nazis tried to kill us in Germany. So I feel like in the past, my people have been jerked around a lot. I think it, a similar thing is happening here in the Middle East. And one of the things that bothers me the most is the fact that a tremendous amount of what is killing thousands and thousands of people are weapons that I have paid for with my tax dollars. And that really, let's just say, annoys me. We have to stop the killing wherever it is. I mean, we're talking about the Middle East right now, but we could also talk about Africa. We could talk about places in Southeast Asia. People are killing people over and over again, many times through our lack of inaction. And I think we all need to start to act like we care about someone besides ourselves. And that's why I ask you to support us as we talk more and more with our federal representatives, just to be able to say, no, it's not just me, it's my city. It's my city councilmen. They also agree. And I would ask for that from you. Ditto on the environment, ditto on the rest of this stuff. Thank you. Oh, I live, I'm in District Three. I live at one zero three six six West Fifty-Ninth. That's the intersection of Fifty-Ninth and Miller. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you getting that, the right there at the end. All right. Is there anyone else in council chambers who would like to give testimony this evening? Seeing none, Ms. Rush, I believe we have some public on Zoom.
Mindy Moore.
All right.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm gonna, about requesting that the city could consider signing a resolution requesting a permanent ceasefire in Gaza and also the comments about newcomers to our city. I've lived here most thirty years, and I'm really distressed by the amount of disinformation and hate speech going on in Jefferson County and now apparently sadly in our own city. There was a recent post on social media that someone heard from several people that the new apartment building at the old Kmart site on Ralston Road would be built, bought by the city of Denver to use for migrant housing. Thankfully, Mayor Simpson was made aware of this post and provided factual rebuttals to the many rumors. The post has been deleted, so I don't know how many residents read her statement. Therefore, I am asking if all of city council can please let your constituents know the facts, perhaps with an official statement. And especially since this apartment building on Ralston Road was in District Three, I would ask Councilmember John Marriott to please talk to your constituents and correct the falsehoods and information about migrants and our city's actions. We also heard about, briefly about Actors Nursery. You know, we in Arvada love our business community, our small businesses especially. And I don't know if all our residents know it, I know you know it, the bulk of our revenue comes from sales tax, from businesses, not from property taxes, but sales taxes. And our Actors was just voted the Arvada Chamber of Commerce Twenty Twenty-Three Business of the Year. So for them to legally hire two newly arrived people with work permits, valid work permits, and yet get backlash from our community, that, that is so wrong. Again, misinformation and lies. Arvada is a welcoming city, and I imagine that many of you in this room, like me, are not descended from indigenous or native peoples. We migrated here, immigrated here. I am also descended from immigrants who were flamed persecution in their original countries. We welcome newcomers and respect the inherent worth and dignity of all. We help those who are new, as well as our current residents that may be facing financial insecurities or other challenging life circumstances. We welcome all, and we in Arvada will not tolerate disinformation or hate. Thank you.
Ms. Moore, thank you very much for your comments. Quickly, your full name and address.
Mindy Moore, seventy thirty Sims Street, Apartment Two Zero Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Ms. Rush, do we have anyone else available on Zoom?
No, that's everyone.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we will move into new business. So we have in our consent agenda, three items today. We have R twenty-four dash zero two three, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Sturgeon Electric Company, Inc., for traffic signal and intersection improvements. Project numbers twenty dash TC dash zero seven, twenty-two dash TC dash zero one, and twenty-three dash TC dash zero three, in an amount not to exceed two million four hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred, uh, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents. Next is Resolution R twenty-four dash zero two four, a resolution authorizing a license agreement by and between the city of Arvada and the city and county of Denver Board of Water Commissioners for the installation of fiber optic conduit at the Long Lake Sporting Complex. And finally, we have R twenty-four dash zero two five, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations made to the Majestic View Nature Center in twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Thank you. Councilmember Faray.
Yes. I move that R twenty-four dash zero two three, R twenty-four dash zero two four, R twenty-four dash zero two five be approved.
Thank you. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, we will be opening the public hearing portion of the agenda. First, on the public hearing portion of the agenda, we have CB twenty-four dash zero zero two, an ordinance retitling, repealing, and reenacting Division Two expungement of juvenile justice records of Article Four Record of Chapter Fifty-Eight Municipal Court of the Arvada City Code, Ordinance Number Forty-eight sixty-eight. And I believe our presenter from the city's attorney's office is Janelle Miller.
Good evening, members of council. This ordinance amends a procedure that the Arvada Municipal Court must follow related to the expungement of juvenile justice records. So while Arvada is a home rules, home rule city and has the authority to provide and regulate our own municipal court, certain aspects of our court procedures are still regulated by state law, one of which is the expungement of the juvenile justice records. So in response to recent legislative changes at the state level, this ordinance just simply brings our Arvada Municipal Court's expungement process into compliance with the state procedure and the state laws. So the Arvada team does recommend that council approve CB twenty-four dash zero zero two, an ordinance retitling, repealing, and reenacting Division Two expungement of juvenile justice records of Article Four Record of Chapter Fifty-Eight, Arvada, the Municipal Court of the Arvada City Code.
With great thanks. Are there any council's comments or action? Councilmember Faray?
I'll make the motion.
I see no delays, please.
I move that CB twenty-four dash zero zero two, an ordinance re, retitling, repealing, and reenacting Division Two expungement of juvenile justice records of Article Four Record of Chapter Fifty-Eight, Municipal Code of the Arvada City Code, be approved on final reading, number four eight six eight, and ordered, published by title only.
All right.
Point of order, did, did you ask the public that anything? Is this public hearing? So did you ask the public?
My, thank you, Councilmember Pfeiffer, apologies. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, the motion is on the table.
Should I say ditto? Do you need me to re-say it?
No, we're good. That is seven, that motion passes seven to zero. All right. Next, we will have on the agenda CB twenty-four dash zero zero three, an ordinance adding Article Seven prohibition of lead drinking water service lines and establishment of Arvada's lead service line replacement program to Chapter One O Two Utilities of the Arvada City Code, Ordinance Number Forty-eight sixty-nine. And Mr. Marriott, your light.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to ask the council to recuse me from this public hearing tonight. This, this council bill will, has the effect of, of payment for replacing of lead service lines. I own at least two and potentially more properties in Arvada that do have galvanized service lines, and I would personally benefit from, potentially could personally benefit from a decision on this matter. So I would ask to be recused, and I would also like to leave the room for the duration of this hearing.
All right. Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to recuse Councilmember Marriott.
All right, please. And all council members will, there you, oh, sorry. Thank you. That passes six to zero. Councilmember Marriott, you are excused.
If the Arvada PD could please excuse him, give him an escort.
We'll let him back. We'll let him back in, it's okay. All right, thank you so much. So I will turn it over to Sharon Israel, Director of Utilities, for our presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We're here this evening to recommend that council, City Council approve Council Bill 24-003, An Ordinance Adding Article Seven Prohibition of Lead Drinking Water Service Lines and Establishment of Arvada's Lead Service Line Replacement Program to Chapter 102 Utilities of the Arvada City Code. Before we do that, we do have a presentation we would like to make to you in the public this evening. I am joined here by Evelyn Rhodes. Evelyn is our Water Quality Administrator on our water treatment team. And she and I will be presenting some background about why we are recommending this ordinance and why we see the city benefit, will benefit. So this is, again, the public hearing, and can you go? Do I have control over this, Candace? Okay, all right, I've got it, thanks. So we're here because there are new federal and state regulatory requirements for the city's public water system specifically related to lead and also galvanized service lines. The council passed this new ordinance on first reading February 12th. We appreciate that support. There've been no changes to the ordinance since February 12th, so we're here tonight for the second reading and public hearing. As Evelyn will describe to you, we estimate between 100 and 250 private service lines will require replacement here in Arvada at a total cost of between $800,000 and $2.5 million. So I'm going to turn this over to Evelyn. She is a subject matter expert, not only at the city, but regionally. So I'm very proud to have her on the team. She's going to talk through the basis of this recommendation and happy to ask any question, answer any questions you have. Thank you. Evelyn.
Mayor and members of council, thank you so much for having me tonight. I want to start with, is it up, down? How do I? There we go, sorry. Okay, so I want to start with giving a brief explanation of what a service line is so you understand what we're talking about here. So a service line is what brings the treated drinking water from the water main to the structure, whether it's a home or a building or an apartment complex. And there's two sides to it. So there's the system-owned portion that the city owns and maintains generally. And then there's the, the customer-owned portion of the line, which is generally the property owner's responsibility. The premise plumbing, which is like the internal plumbing, is, is not a part of this. So that still remains the property owner's responsibility. Okay, so with the Environmental Protection Agency's updates to the lead and copper rule, first in 2021, and then there currently a draft of another one that should be out by the end of this year. There, the new requirements are that we now have to inventory all these drinking water service lines throughout our entire system. And if we find any lead service lines, we need to replace them. So this includes both the public and the private portions, which for Arvada, we have about 42,000 connections in the city. And then we have to create this inventory and a, a public-facing map by this October. So we've actually been working on this for the last three, almost four years now, looking for these lines and trying to categorize them. So we actually have categorized a lot of them. We've done extensive records review and public outreach over the last few years for what we've called Phase One, which is the investigation portion of this project. And we now have about 2,200 left in the city that are what we are calling unknown, that we just don't know what they are. And that's what we're really kind of honing in on now. I did want to note that Arvada's water system doesn't really correlate exactly with the city boundaries. So we do have many homes and structures outside of the city that are on our water. And we also have quite a few homes in the city of Arvada that are not on our water. So it doesn't match perfectly with the city boundaries. So just something to kind of keep in mind, too. Okay, so, so far with this inventory, we actually haven't found any lead lines so far, although we still have about 2,000 to look for. We have found about 40, almost 50 now at this point of these galvanized service lines. And with the new updates to these regulations, they are basically defining these, some galvanized lines as lead lines now. And I can discuss that more if you would like. Okay, so I wanted to skip forward just a little bit, and I'll double back to this, to kind of show this map so you can see these areas that we're honing in on. So the next part of our investigation phase is a potholing project where we've hired a contractor to actually dig holes in yards of people to help us look for these service lines, so we can really see them. And then you can see in this map where we're looking is basically where we've found them. So you can see the majority is in the southeast portion of the city, up in the town of Lyden, and then also some sprinkled throughout. So probably most districts have at least one or two of these properties in their districts. So for our potholing, we've chosen about 650 addresses. We've finished about two, at least 200 of them so far. So we're still kind of working through finishing the rest of those. And then just for reference to that kind of blue highlighted area in the southeast corner is a Justice 40 Initiative tract. So we have almost 500 of our kind of high likelihood structures are located in that tract. And, and we will be potholing and looking in that area as well. Okay, so why do we need this new ordinance now? To complete this inventory, we need to encourage and incentivize participation and to penalize non-compliance, because we have to complete this, this regulatory requirement. And then also, most importantly, it's a public health matter. That's why this regulation exists. We want to find and remove the lead lines. We've known for a long time that lead is not good for your health, especially for infants and young children. So this is an important matter. We, we want to get this done as quickly as possible. So this also lays the foundation for the next phase, which is the replacement phase, where we're actually going to get these lines out that we're finding. And this new ordinance is kind of one element of our total plan to complete our inventory, comply with regulatory requirements, improve public health and safety, increase equity and environmental justice, get the lead out, and overall improve our community. This ordinance also falls in line with the city's mission to deliver safe, clean, high-quality drinking water to everyone in Arvada. Okay, so the ordinance itself has three primary elements. The first one is that it's going to prohibit the use of having a lead service line conveying finished drinking water to any structure that's on Arvada's water. The definition will include the galvanized lines for structures built prior to 1960. That was sort of a line that was drawn by the Colorado State's policy for this program. So we're going with that, that date of 1960. It's applicable to previously known or newly discovered lead service lines, meaning if you find one later, this still applies. All the lines need to be replaced by December 31st, 2026. And it will say that we won't allow any new service connections if a line either is a lead service line or is unknown material until it's confirmed non-led. Okay, the second element is that it will establish the Lead Service Line Replacement Program, what we call our LSLRP. This, these protocols for this program were decided upon through a multi-department city task force that we started in 2021 to kind of come up with these elements. We looked at a lot of the options of what would make the most sense. And, and these are kind of what we came up with as the most effective and efficient method to complete the inventory and the replacements. So the program will go into effect on May 1st this year, 2024. And it will say that the city will manage and pay for these replacements between May 1st, 2024, and December 31st, 2026. We will get consent from the property owner. So if they don't want to participate, they still have to get the lineup, or they don't have to use our program if they don't want to. We're also going to have a kind of a retroactive reimbursement back to the promulgation date of the lead and copper rule revisions of 2021, just because we started our outreach at that point and really encouraged people to help us find these lines. So it, we wanted to give them something if they were proactively got rid of their line in that time. So this program will delineate the applicability, responsibilities of the property owner versus what the city will do, and financing solutions, which is a federal requirement that we have ongoing financing solutions. Will not cover premise plumbing. And this will be available publicly on our city website on May 1st. Okay, and then the third aspect is that it will establish a penalty for non-compliance. This won't start, though, until after the end of our three-year program. So we're, we're hoping that everybody does it, and we don't have to get to this point. But this would be for people who refuse to participate, that they could be potentially subject to a penalty. And then also after that point, after January 1st, 2027, the property owner is then on their own to replace their line by themselves and to have to pay for it. If there's remaining unknowns or remaining confirms lead service lines, they'll have a certain amount of days to let us know, confirm the material, replace it. And then if they haven't after certain points, then there will be an annual fine assessed. And then I do want to say that we've been doing so much outreach over the last few years. We've met so many residents. And we actually have received really great feedback and a lot of support for this program from a lot of our residents that we've been in contact with. And we, we do feel that this, the way we've set this program up is really fair and generous and that it will result in really good compliance rates, which is really all we're looking for. We don't want to penalize anybody, we just want compliance. And that it's really a partnership, the program's a partnership between the residents, the property owners, and our water customers. So, yeah, and then I'll send it back to Sharon.
Thank you, Evelyn. So I'm here, back here to talk about the financial impact of this. So ordinance itself doesn't direct us to spend any particular money. It directs us to create a program. What we want to do is use budgeted funds that are currently set aside in our water fund to pay for replacement of all the service lines that we find that are lead or galvanized. We estimate that that's between $800,000 and $2.5 million, as I mentioned earlier. We're working really hard right now with a contractor, as approved by the city council, to pothole, as, as Evelyn showed you a map of, to really identify, make sure we know where all of these are so that we can get in there in the next few years and help work with the homeowners to replace them. There's a possible addition of city funds if we do assess fines, but we're not putting that into any of our calculus as far as financial impact. So again, our request is to help us as the city, water system, comply with new federal state and regulations. We have already, of course, passed this on first reading, thanks, thanks to council. And so we're here for second reading. This is the right thing to do. That's the, that's our recommendation as the team. It helps protect public health for all the reasons that Evelyn talked about. And it also keeps us in the good graces of our regulatory oversight agencies. And as, as Evelyn mentioned, we've done a lot of work to, to identify those customers that will need our, need this kind of change in their service line. And, and we've gotten a lot of really good feedback. So happy to answer any questions, either from you or any members of the public.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Sharon and the team for this presentation. It's very useful. Just a clarification on the funds that are paying for these replacements. My understanding there's federal money involved, is that correct?
So the funds we have right now are set aside from our current sources of revenue. But we are currently working with a financial advisor to identify federal funds that we could use to backfill. So we're currently regressive, not only for, for this particular initiative to replace service lines, but for all the major capital improvements that we have programmed in. We're looking really broadly at how we can bring those federal dollars in.
Okay, thank you.
I see no other lights, so at this time I will open a public comment. Is there anyone in chambers this evening who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Rush, are there any, none on Zoom? Perfect, then Councilmember Ambrose.
Make a motion?
All right, it's all yours.
I move that CB24-003, An Ordinance, An Ordinance Adding Article Eight, Six, Seven, VII, Prohibition, Prohibition of Lead Drinking Water Service Lines and Establishment of Arvada's Lead Service Line Replacement Program to Chapter 102 Utilities of the Arvada City Code be approved on final reading, numbered 4869, and ordered, published by title only.
Perfect. All council members have cast their votes, and that passes six to zero. Thank you so much. If somebody would tell Councilmember Marriott he is free to return. That, I will close the public hearing portion of our agenda. And we will, ah, there's Mr. Marriott now, perfect. See, we let you back in. Perfect. Next, we turn to our workshop portion of the evening, and we have one on our new pool facility naming process. I'll turn it over to Katie Patterson, our Communications Manager for Infrastructure.
Hello, thank you all for having me this evening. So I'm our Communications Manager for all things infrastructure. I work with our Public Works and Utilities Departments, and I am helping our Public Works team with the communication and engagement for this naming process. And so just quickly, I'll give you a little overview of the new facility. We got a little bit of a highlight there, the new diving platforms. And then I'll give you an overview of the process that we went through for this, the feedback that we heard, and then some next steps for you all this evening. So as you know, George J. Meyer's Swimming Center is being replaced in the old parking lot with a new facility. These are some design renderings of the interior, and then some of the features of the new facility, including the 50-meter Mertha Pool that was custom-designed and delivered from Italy, and the new competitive diving platforms, which are a really big asset for the community. There will be three 3-meter springboards, three 1-meter springboards, one 3-meter platform, and one 5-meter platform. And the, as Councilmember Pfeiffer kind of highlight, mentioned a little bit, the closest place to use diving platforms like that is Colorado Springs at the Olympic Facility where you have to be able to get in and use them. And they're very, in high demand. So that's a really big asset to our community and to the whole region. There's going to be additional spectator seating that you can see in these photos kind of up above there. That's going to hold an additional 850 spectators, also adding to the ability to have some more competitive swims and things like that. So there's a secondary 25-yard pool that is in that top photo. That's kind of what you're seeing directly in front of you. There will be universal changing rooms for improved ADA accessibility and inclusive space, expanded parking, some of which has already been created. The rest will be where the current facility is. And then the building is being designed to lead Silver Certification, and there will be an advanced filtration system to conserve water. So that's just a few highlights, not all-inclusive of kind of the asset that this facility will be. But I wanted to mention some of those things because that was a lot of the impetus for going through a naming process. While the project is being referred to as the new Myers Pool or the Myers Pool Replacement, it will be a new facility, and so there is the opportunity to give this facility a new name. And so in partnership with Jefferson County School District and Apex Park and Recreation District, we wanted to begin that conversation with them and consider the needs of those partners as well as the city. And then, of course, we wanted to consider the community feedback and see what the sentiment was from our community members. And other naming projects that you all have been a part of, often that's where the best names have come from. So wanted to be inclusive of that process. So in January, we kicked off that process internally with our partners at Jeffco Schools in Apex and came up with a list of kind of appropriate names that our partner agencies agreed upon. We took that list of names and worked directly with, outreach directly to our pool user groups. So these five groups are key user groups. Mile High Dive Club, North Jeffco Swim Team, the Arvada High School Swim Teams, Meadow Glen Swim Team, and then Coral Key Scuba Program. And so as we engaged them, we heard from both our partner agencies as well as these pool user groups, some of this feedback that I have in front of you. So this desire for a regionally recognizable name and one that represents the caliber of this facility was important to particularly our partner agencies. And then we also heard familiarity with the Myers name, and that was important to some of our users, as well as the influence of Coach Ken Kelly, who was a swim coach in Arvada for a long time. And then what's kind of represented in this quote here that we heard from a lot of the younger swimmers was something that instills a sense of fun and a sense of belonging and how they feel when they visit the pool, practice there, swim there. So one of our Mile High Dive coaches, on behalf of a team member, shared this quote from from a young team member that she wishes it could be named Cloud Nine because practice is her happy place, and she wanted to tell her friend she was going to Cloud Nine. So just a little anecdote to help explain how important the naming is to the folks who use the facility. So from all of that, we came up with a list of 14 reasonable names, and I just want to point out that some of them were kind of iterations of very similar names. So things like George Myers Aquatic Center versus Myers Aquatic Center, or Kenneth Kelly Aquatic Center versus Ken Kelly Aquatic Center. So just to keep the list reasonable, we narrowed all of those down to like one version of each of those things. So that's how we got to 14, and I promise I'll show them to you here shortly. So the next step in the process was the broader public engagement. So we posted that list of 14 publicly for the community to weigh in on. We promoted that list on the project webpage, which is arvadaco.gov/meyerspool. And then we also have a project email list that goes to about 250 folks who are interested in this project specifically. We had signage at the pool facility, the existing facility, the Speak Up Arvada, and Arvada News e-newsletters, each go to about 4,000 folks respectively. The news flash on the city's website is kind of that news bar that scrolls at the bottom of our homepage, as well as an Arvada Press article, and then cross-promoting on social media across all three partner organizations. And then folks could submit additional names through engage@arvada.org as well. So during that window that the survey was open, we saw over nearly 3,000 total page views, but really what's kind of important there is the nearly 1,700 unique visitors. It was the third most visited page during that time besides just our homepage and Pay My Bill, which is a pretty important one, so people are visiting that pretty regularly. So really good traffic that we saw in engagement with that public survey. But folks could fill it out multiple times, which you'll see here because there are significantly more submissions than there were unique visitors to the page. So just over 1,000 more submissions than that. And so this is how the numbers tallied out for that list of 14 names. And I just want to point out that those top two are two that have a particularly passionate community audience, so are the most likely to have received those multiple votes, but they could have, you know, also kind of flushed out anywhere in there for other names that folks felt were important. And then beyond that assumption you can kind of make about double votes, there's also, I just wanted to give you the feedback, that JM was the one that our Mile High Dive Club kids really loved the most. They liked those acronyms that kind of gave that magic or JM, something fun, so I wanted to share that with you all. And then we also know that folks are interested in finding ways to commemorate both the history of the facility and some of the folks who have influenced the swimming community here locally. And so while there isn't currently a process for doing that or commemorating in any way, it is something that we can continue to consider as this project continues into the future. And so there were three other submissions, and those are in front of you here, that folks sent in through that engage@arvada.org. And then last but not least, our next steps. So we'd like to narrow that list of 14 down to five, and so would open it up to your feedback and preferences or perspectives on this. And then we'll be back on Monday, March 18th, with a final name for the new, to finalize the name for the new facility. And then just as a reminder, that third point there is just that this timing is really just to ensure that the design and construction installation of signage can stay on track with the facility construction and opening this fall. So I can go back to the slide with all the names, if that would be helpful.
Yes, please.
Or other questions.
All right, Councilmember Pfeifer, kick us off.
So just knowing processes, I won't be here on the 18th, but the processes, you're going to narrow it down to five, or we're narrowing it down to five, and then what are we doing on the 18th? How do we get to one? Or is that going to be a debate up here?
We'll put forward a recommendation of one, but we will have five for you to choose from. Or it doesn't have to be five. It could be more or less. We went with five because we had 14. That felt like a reasonable number to get it down to, but in the past, I think you've done like three typically that you're picking between for the park namings you've done recently. Did I miss anything?
No, you did hit it. I would just reemphasize that we wanted to make sure that you could think through this tonight, come up with your list, and then you will see the three or five or whatever number you come up with tonight in the next council packet. Then we'll make a recommendation, which will be the foundation based upon our partners and the feedback they've given to the council, but then on the 18th, the council can make a final decision.
Okay, and then, okay, I'll wait, take a second bite at the apple later, so let somebody else talk.
All right. Councilmember Frey.
So it looks like six of the top ones have Myers in it. Is that right? So I guess my recommendation would be one with a Myers name, probably that top one, and then the JM is a cool acronym, and that would be my two cents. Is there a reason why we would just not keep it at Myers, as like Myers Pool?
This was just an opportunity to go through this process and see what folks thought, and so that's why we kept it on the list. Part of the rationale was also to do some of that kind of more place-based naming that would kind of point to that kind of regional asset that the facility is going to be in. So that's how that came about internally. But no is the short answer, I guess.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Any other council members with thoughts or comments? Councilmember Ambrose.
I would also include the Arvada Aquatic Center just to, I know it's generic and boring, but sometimes it's just, that's a good thing to have, that it's not tied to somebody's name, that it's not, you know, tied to any particular facility or, you know, group or something that later folds or whatever. Like it's just, we're pretty sure it's always going to be in Arvada, you know? So that's a safe bet, and I think kind of just a more neutral, and then maybe different platforms can have different names or different rooms, things that are easier to change with the times or donations or different activities and clubs and things like that.
Sure, thanks.
Mayor Proton Mormon.
Thank you. I think I would echo the sentiments of Councilmember Ambrose on that, and I'm just thinking of our other athletic facilities, like our golf courses don't have, you know, a person's name. It's more about the location. So I'm just thinking in some consistency there as well, so I like that approach.
Councilmember Davis.
I think it's important to understand that West Woods is named after the West family and not the fact that it's on the west side of the city. So there, we have, we do have something that's named after these folks, but I do like the idea of calling it Arvada Aquatic Center and then naming platforms after folks.
Councilmember Pfeifer.
I too agree with that. I like the being generic and then naming platforms or rooms after it as well. I think that just makes more sense for me as well.
Councilmember Marriott, would you care? Nope. All right, then I guess I'll give my final thought. I do really like the idea of one of these fun acronyms like Magic or Jam or Ajax or something along those lines. You know, we have Apex, we have the NAC. It gives a sense of kind of place and identity, so I do really like that, and I agree heartedly that perhaps platforms or rooms, the pools themselves after Coach Myers and Coach Kelly could be highly appropriate.
Thanks. Is that it? Okay.
Thank you so much.
We'll take the feedback and be back in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. All right. Next, our workshop is on speed management, and I will turn it over to our Director of Public Works, Jaclyn Rhodes.
Excited to return to you today and talk a little bit about our speed management program. You may recall on February 12th, you presented a study session a bit about the existing conditions of our transportation system, and we wanted to follow on that conversation with you today to talk a little bit about some of our current practices, data management, application of tools for speed management citywide. So tonight, I'll be joined by our team members across the public works and Arvada Police Team. Just wanted to acknowledge that we have members from traffic, mobility, engineering, and our Arvada Police Team here tonight to speak. So we'll kick it off with just a little bit of a refresher on some of the current conditions that we shared in our last workshop, talk about some of the known needs and challenges, continuous improvement in terms of the framework and how we're managing the program across the city, and share some data with you in terms of enforcement. So at this point, I'll hand it over to our City Traffic Engineer, Mazru Hussain.
Good evening. I know it's really late, but it's an exciting topic to discuss, traffic, and I can clearly see the smile on one of your face. Thank you. So again, Jaclyn, thank you very much for the brief introduction. I would like to start with the top three customer concern that we shared on our February 12 council meeting, traffic signal malfunction, perceived speeding, and lack of signing and payment marking, just as a recap. Okay. So the next slide I also shared on February 12 council meeting, it's a high-level, you know, traffic signal infrastructure information. I'm not going to go to the details as we discussed before, but if you have any questions, please ask me. I can definitely pause the presentation also. The next one, I would like to, I want to provide a high-level overview of the citywide speeding issue through the lens of customer feedback, our citizens' feedback, what I meant, because this is very important, because what our citizens are experiencing every day, what we are hearing, I think that's actually a very valuable feedback. So I'd like to share some of the citizen concern, and you'll be able to see what exactly we have been hearing. Not necessarily every complaint we heard, but this is a snapshot of what we heard so far. The first slide is, I hope, Councilmember Pfeifer, you remember, you shared a concern about an inconsistent speed limit throughout our city. We actually conducted an analysis. You can see that we have approximately 1,600 speed limit signs throughout the whole city. It's a significant number of signs. So over time, the inconsistent speed limit signs were implemented throughout the city. On a few corridors, there are one sign that does not meet the rest. On a different corridor, several may not match the rest. So definitely a short-term, medium-term, and long-term approach that we would like to take to address this inconsistent speed limit sign. So definitely something, if you can see that we are talking about on a particular corridor, we have seen just one sign is not matching. That's easy fix. But on few corridors, we have found like five, six different, they're very inconsistent. So if we try to change those, all of a sudden, it's just going to confuse people, our travelers a lot. So we have to take a step-by-step approach before we change those. I highlighted a very brief portion of the customer complaint. You see, there is, the customer complaint says there is absolutely no reason for a 30 mile per hour speed limit. I highlighted the area on the map. It's actually exactly on the West Arvada, Westwood Arvada Street, and the citizens raised concern about the validity of the neighborhood's 30 mile per hour speed limit. I just would like to say that the Colorado statute recommended a speed limit for any residential district is 30 mile per hour. We, as an agency, we can plan to update our neighborhood speed limit to 25 mile per hour. However, we cannot just change all of a sudden. A system-wide changes needs to happen. There are cities across the country has adopted that. Not necessarily that it's going to be something completely unusual for our city, but just something to think about.
Councilmember Frey.
Just in this statute, it says the recommended speed limit for a residential district is 30 miles per hour, but are there exceptions? For example, this looks like it's going directly through a golf course.
Yeah, so there, if it is, you are absolutely right that when, when we as a planner or traffic engineer are trying to decide the speed limit of a particular roadway, we definitely should consider other factors. But in general, if a road is classified as a residential road, it's by default gets a 30 mile per hour, and that's the way the city has developed over a period of time.
But when we're looking at it, by default, it's 30 miles an hour, but then looking at this, you see that there's a variable which impacts.
Yes.
That decision.
The surrounding land use absolutely has some impacts on how the speed limit should be assigned to that particular roadway. So there is not one variable that goes into that, but I'm just talking about the statute points of view, that residential area goes to 30 mile per hour. But again, we have options, and in practice, we can actually look at those surrounding land use and activity centers, as well as the non-motorized travelers. If we have a high-intense non-motorized traveler, we can think about reducing the speed limit on those particular area.
So when this person complained about this area, we just said that it was 30 miles an hour and we didn't change it?
No, we looked at, we looked at every details, actually. So we provided a comprehensive report and looked at everything, and we recommended a step approach, what we can do. We also look at, there are, there were, there are actually almost seven or six crossing locations, so we provide a comprehensive approach. We can share that report with you also.
Thanks.
Yeah, we didn't just say, the statute said this one, and we would not be able to do anything.
But it's still 30.
Yeah, it's still 30, yes, you're right.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next one is, if you look at the map on the right side, that I highlighted seven locations where we got seven speeding complaints on the east side of State Highway 121 or Warsaw Bypass. And there are a few citizens' complaints related to detour traffic and speeding. Let me provide a quick insight about the detour traffic that, what I'm referring to. So if I go to my next slide, I did a quick, used the Google Map, and if I, any particular day, I just picked up February 13, when I was thinking about this presentation at 5:00 PM, if somebody would like to choose a route from point A to point B, you can clearly see there are three different options that Google provides you. And the first option is the regional corridor. The minimum time can take six minutes, the maximum can take 16 minutes. However, you can clearly see that Pierce Street, which is exactly the same distance compared to the regional corridor, it might take less time to try, to go from point A to point B. So I'd like to give a little bit more information that I shared on February 12. This is, I shared, you know, the data collected from the cell phone users were converted into travel time analytics to understand the system or condition, and this is the map on the right you are seeing. So the green means traffic is traveling at or below free flow speed, and the red means the traffics are, traffics are traveling below three to five mile per hour free, free flow speed. And you can clearly see that this is even the op peak year, the east Arvada, especially near the interstate and all these regional corridors, is heavily congested, even in the op peak hour. My next slide is, I highlighted a roadway segment on the right. You can clearly see that it's an orchid street between 64th and 72nd. This is one of the roadway segments that represents a segment without any self-enforcing roadway geometry. What I mean by that, that particular roadway segment does not have any natural curvature to encourage drivers to select operating speed consistent with the posted speed limit. I would like to share with you that we have initiated a process to identify similar challenges at the citywide level so that we can proactively do something for those segments that does not, don't have the natural curvature or self-enforcing roadway geometry. not, don't have the natural curvature or self-enforcing roadway geometry. Well, that was the few slides that I was trying to share with you. What is the speeding complaints that we hear from our citizens, so that our council can understand some of those things that we hear every day. My next slide is going to be a continuous improvement on the speed management program and the transportation system, system plan. The Speed Management Program is a, it's a practical action and customer service-oriented speed management program based on, entirely on request and concern voiced by local residents. There is a basic framework consists of six different information, speed data, safety analysis, technology application, enforcement, roadway geometry, and education. Basically, at a high level, it's going to be an integrated speed data collection and management system, appropriate level of safety analysis, that's something, our Sergeant Kelly is going to share some of the information as a part of the process, our presentation. We definitely would like to take the advantage of the technology, that's something we, I will also highlight as a part of my presentation, enforcement, assessing the roadway geometry, and at the end, raising awareness of safety and speeding. And this framework, basically, we have been following for a long time, since I started, at least I started my journey over here. So every time we hear a citizen's complaint, we looked at all this information before we say, before we provide our recommendation. But I just would like to highlight the basic framework of the speed management. The next one is a very clean process that I would like to, and how the decision, workflow decision-making process. The step one is to do the data analysis. We would like to definitely review the safety, and we would like to assess the RECS. And based on the RECS assessment, we also come up, we also come up with a streamlined RECS-based response. At the end, we are also, the step three is going to be the capital, capital project identification and prioritization. So this is going to be the very simple three-step. Again, as I said, we have been following and practicing this similar practice, but it was not as documented as we have right now. So, as I said, most of the RECS-based response have been part of our practices. One potential change that I would like to highlight as a part of this presentation, which is the speed safety cameras. In coordination with Arvada PD and the traffic engineering team, work on the feasibility of the technology, and we identified that we could implement speed safety cameras and provide additional enforcement with the help of technology. We will also coordinate a few challenges and opportunities internally before we can implement it, but we made some progress. As I said, some of the feasibility analysis has been done. I think this is going to be a reasonably, I would say, significant effort, and we will be able to provide a very reasonable customer service back to our citizens and make our community safer. I'd like to give you a quick insight, which was not part of my slide presentation, but whenever we collect the speed data, there is always certain percentage of people that we always see is not, it's, we call it erratic driver behavior, because less than 1% sometimes we see are speeding really high speed. With the speed safety cameras, we would not be able to enforce, I mean, our, with our resource that we have, we cannot enforce 24/7. But some of these camera, we can implement, and we can actually provide some awareness to those people that traveling at a really high speed inside the neighborhoods or in a certain corridor. So I think that's going to change a significant, that will definitely help us to be in this, in a different level compared to where we are today. The step three is capital improvement project identification and prioritization, prioritization. There are two essential, there are two critical items that I would like to talk about over here, one is the project funding, and one is the community consensus. So you can clearly see that we have a lot of factors that we are going to consider in the project planning and prioritization factors. And based on that, we can have a low-cost improvement, such as sign and marking can be implemented immediately, or we can have medium-to-high-cost improvements, including speed management devices, requires community consensus and CIP process. The community consensus is very important, because what we have found, that maybe 5% of our, some part of our community in a particular, particular part of our city are having, showing some concern, but if we implement a project or implement a device, maybe the 95% of the citizens may not going to prefer those solution on their roadway. So we would like to definitely, going through that process, needs to make sure that the community is up to speed before we go and implement those projects. That is the end of my presentation. I have to hand over to Sergeant Kelly, if I can wait for questions, or I can wait at the end to answer questions.
Councilmember Fifer?
Let's do it now.
Yes.
While we're thinking about it. So, I don't know, my thoughts are not completely together, but FHWA has the roadway safety audit process.
Yes.
You kind of hint that in here.
Yes.
But part of that process is actually getting stakeholders on scene and looking at the road through the eyes of the stakeholders.
Yes.
Are we doing something like that?
Yeah, so you are absolutely right. So we, we, initially, we are looking at the system level, and as I said, that, you know, where exactly we are hearing, almost last two years, every citizen's complaint we have received, we have geo-coated, actually. And we are overlaying those information on our roadway segment, where we know don't have the natural curvature or self-enforce, a lack of self-enforcing geometry, and it's pretty closely matches, actually. So, and we are going to also look at the vulnerable users. And then we should be able to identify some of the, we should be able to prioritize some of the corridor, and then we should be able to follow exactly what you said. And through the lens of that citizen's complaint, citizen's eyes, we should be able to find out a reasonable, you know, plan and project that we should be able to implement. Then I think we'll be in a better place, but again, the process has started.
So, well, and you did that recently at our last one with the crosswalks over in Kandellis.
Yes.
You joined the users, walked to school, I don't know if council knows this, but he walked to school with the kids that were complaining about it, and that afternoon, within 24 hours of our meeting, you already had crosswalks put into the road.
Yes.
Because you, you identified a risk to the user.
There is no brainer, no brainer, yep.
But, but that is a type of RSA.
Absolutely.
But part of the risk-safety analysis is including people like fire, police, the teachers, not just what citizens are complaining, but like, who actually uses the road? You know, the utility team, maybe the inspectors, just random people that look down this road and say, okay, what are the problems with this road, and how do we make it safer? Because, you know, you can engineer it all day long, and you'll never get it, because if the engineers were right back when they built Oak, it wouldn't have been straight.
Yes.
You know, there's, there would be curvatures in it to slow it down, but back then, that was a good design.
Yep, you are absolutely right. I, as I, as I was talking about the initiative that we have undertaken, we are also working with fire department. One of the things we identified, there are several corridors that we have heard some citizens complain about some speeding, but those are the primary routes for our emergency response. So when we were going to identify the appropriate, you know, treatment, we would need to make sure that it matches the, some of the requirement, not some of them, most of the requirement that fire department needs to match. So definitely, that's actually part of the presentation also. If we have some time, we might be able to share one or two slides at the end, that will highlight some of these issues too.
Well, while we keep going on it, around the, the speed limit in the residential areas, you know, as, as we've probably, I've been around long enough to know the width of a residential road drives, causes certain behavior, you know, the more narrow you make it, the slower people drive, the wider you make it, the faster they drive. You know, I, I am actually in favor of just saying all residential streets are 25 miles per hour, because I think the other cities are starting to do that as well, and that will take time. But, but that being said, we also need to create an environment that promotes safety and safe drivers. You can't always enforce, you can't always do all that, but I would, and I'm not sure what our processes and our projects, when we do them, but I've also, this RSA has been a big thing for me lately, so I, I'm really into it, but one of the things that some cities are doing is, for every road project, even if it's a mill and overlay, or, or, you know, just something simple, they have to put a safety element on that block of road, either, you know, I don't want to say chicanes, because that can cause problems in District Three, but, but you know, some sort of element narrowing the road, or whatever the case is, or a feedback sign or something, but, you know, I don't know if we do a checkpoint where maybe we should start thinking about, what does that mean to add one safety element to the road? And if we do that over time, because I was, I was reading about, what's that, what's that town across in New Jersey where the Cake Boss is? Hoboken?
Yeah, Hoboken.
See, I was getting it right. They started doing that, there was a whole article on this, that they started changing the striping of their roads, and they went from, I don't know how many people were getting killed from pedestrians, to zero for the last, I don't know, five, 10 years? It's amazing change in, in, and that was really just creating an environment and making one change at a time. In this, in this case, it was just striping. So I, I would, I would add to your projects that we really need to take an assertive effort on the safety lens, not just the maintenance of the asset, but what's the safety operations of the road?
I 100% agree with that, more than 100%. So I'd like to give you some background, why those projects initiated that you talked about. Whenever we talked about the safety, there are two aspects of safety. One is the nominal safety or minimum safety. That's actually the engineers decide, actually. Engineers say, go with this guideline, you'd be safe. The other one, we completely forget, which is the maximize of the safety over a limit, which is the traffic operational analysis, safety, land use, environment, it's called substantive, you know, safety. You, you will, we have a huge documentation on federal highway, and I was reading that, actually, it's very fascinating. Then I was trying to translate some of the needs internally also, I say, following guideline one thing versus what you just said, hey, look at the, look at the corridor in the, in the lens of a user. And I think you brought a very good example, the day I worked with the citizen, there is no brainer, I talked with our staff, and I say, can we do it today? Because the need was there so much. I mean, there is nothing to be analyzed anymore. But as far as our guideline, maybe it's not needed there. So I completely agree with you.
Yeah, just take one bite at a time on each of these.
Absolutely, yes.
Don't, don't get, don't do the, you know, paralysis by analysis on a whole corridor. If we have to only, if we're only going to, you know, do some small portion of two or three blocks, let's get the two or three blocks fixed.
Yes.
And so that we're not coming back. Now, granted, the, the speed limit signs are all a little bit different story, but, but, you know, like when we widen these roads, like even Ralston Road, I mean, that was a huge view of what this would look like, and getting these little 24-inch sidewalks to the nice big wide ones, and really trying to put at least one additional safety perspective in each road would be nice.
I, I completely agree with that, and some of the maintenance project has an excellent opportunity to talk about some of the safety things that we can add as we are working on those projects. Completely agree.
Okay. No, thank you. It was a good job on those crosswalks. It was a huge hit.
No, thank you very much.
Went through like wildfire, everyone was talking about it.
No, no, thank you.
It was crazy.
We try our best.
Yeah, he walked to school with the kids, and felt their, their day, and that's impressive. You know, to get out, not even 12 hours after our meeting, you were out there, and that's very impressive.
Oh, thank you.
And then you saw what they went through to get there, and I appreciate the quick action by the rest of the city as well. So that's just amazing.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this, this presentation. It's always exciting to hear, and I am fully supportive. So one thing that I think we've spoken about ad nauseam, but I do want to talk about in terms of the risk for safety, is when we do these big projects, you're talking about how fast people were going down Oak, I think sometimes they were going down quickly around down Oak because they were frustrated with Sims, and the inability to go down Sims. And I, and I agree, they were, they were hot-footing it down Oak. But I also see now, I'm seeing the same thing with 66th in the residential area, be due to some of the stuff that's going on on 72nd. And people are just zipping through, and I think it's just frustrating to them. And then also the same thing with Ralston and Brooks. When Ralston was under construction, people were speeding through Brooks. So I'm hoping that maybe we can couple some of that risk analysis on alternate routes that folks are going to be taking. You did put one on there for Wadsworth on Pierce Street, but there was an accident on Pierce Street, and I don't believe, was it during rush hour? So I think that if we could do some risk-safety analysis on some of the alternates that we recommend, that would be super. And I'm going to invite you to walk to school with the kids from Sierra Elementary.
Yeah, please.
Eighteenth and Oak.
I'd be happy to go, just, yeah, thank you.
Vanderhoff would probably like it, too.
All right. No more lights? All right, perfect. Then, if we're throwing in our favorite traffic corridors, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Lamar.
Thanks, Mazdor. Kelly Sheehan, I'm a commander in the PD over the traffic unit. I have been involved in traffic most of my career, either as an investigator for crashes or as a traffic sergeant. So it's kind of near and dear to me, I suppose, so that's why it's nice as a commander, now I'm back over the unit, so I can stay involved in the traffic stuff that's been happening in the city. So what I'm looking at doing today is just to give you a quick overview of kind of how we address the traffic complaints that we get in the PD, and then talk about some crash data that we have just as a city. So first off, the traffic units priorities, how we deploy our units. First and foremost, we're trying to reduce the number and/or severity of accidents in high accident locations and high violation locations, and typically, we do that through traditional enforcement. You know, sending the traffic guys out there, the patrol folks out there, and doing enforcement in those areas. Next is to increase safety and voluntary compliance ultimately around school zones. And then third is our sector-specific needs more in the neighborhood streets, so usually the less volume streets. So when we get a traffic complaint, just in general, the first thing that we typically will do is review the crash data. If the data supports it, we'll just start doing enforcement. If the data's not supporting it, we'll also give it to an officer to review. Sometimes, I think it's kind of like what you mentioned, sometimes the data maybe doesn't support what the actual experience is in the area, so I send people out to look at it. Oftentimes, as the traffic sergeant, I would go out and look at it myself, and really evaluate, you know, what's going on here, what's the level of violations we're having. If it then meets the threshold, we do officer enforcement. If it doesn't, then we have various alternatives that we would employ, and I will go over those here in a few slides. When we're talking speed complaints specifically, the first thing I do is I look for speed data. So if I have speed data, then I review it, and if that meets the threshold, then I send officers out to do enforcement. Now with the, in the PD, back in 2021, we bought our own radar trailer, which has been really nice, because we're very nimble with it, we can put it out at a moment's notice. We usually set it out for a couple of weeks to collect the data, and then I can look at that data and then make decisions from there. If it's not over the threshold, I look at crash data. Sometimes we have maybe moderate or minor speeding, but then we do have a bunch of crashes, or just like I mentioned on the other one, we look at the area, maybe the violations are there in another way, not just speeding. So if that warrants enforcement, I'll send an officer out. If not, then we'll go through all alternatives to try to impact this, what's happening in the area. So as stated, October 2021 is when we started deploying our speed trailer. Just to give you a sense, since then, we've put it out at 64 locations, and that was through the end of December, so we have a few extra locations, we've had it out this year. And those were all based on speed complaints. Of those 64, we had nine that the data supported extra enforcement. In addition to that, we've had seven other complaints that are for other violations, so red lights, U-turns, parking, stop signs, et cetera. And of those, we had two that warranted traditional enforcement. When I get the information back, I generate a report, this is just one of the graphs that I can use. I, I manipulate the data a few different ways and filter it a few different ways to give me the information I'm looking for. I know in our prior meeting with you guys, Mazdor talked about the 85th percentile, and so that's a, that's a key point that we look at. For me, I look at the 85th percentile, but I also look really at the time-of-day trends, because there are times where, over the course of two weeks, I'm not hitting an 85th percentile speed that causes a lot of alarm. But if I look at, say, morning rush or evening rush, I see that there's multiple cars during that hour that are going in and enforceable. that hour that are going in an enforceable speed limit, or a speed, so for us, it's anything over 11 miles per hour. So if I have enough cars going through in that area at that hour, then I know I can send an officer out there, and I'm likely going to have some impact on enforcement. So for me, I look a little deeper than just hitting the 85th percentile or the average speeds. Once this report is generated, I share it with my traffic unit folks, I share it with the sector commander that's in that area, and then I share it with traffic engineering so that they have the information as well. I also share it back if there's a reporting party from the community that was asking for this, the speed to be evaluated, I'll send it back with them too, and oftentimes have additional conversations with them to interpret and explain the data. So just for a quick comparison, this is an area on 55th Avenue between Wadsworth and Marshall that has generated complaints. Again, I became a traffic sergeant in 2011, I was getting complaints on this area back then as well, so this was even before the redesign on Wadsworth, we've had complaints of speeding in this area. So it came back up again. In the past, we had not been real successful trying to do enforcement. There's a lot of factors why it makes enforcement difficult on this stretch of road, but typically, when I'd get complaints, I'd send officers out. It wasn't very fruitful. It had been a couple of years since I had heard about it, so I put the trailer out. And some of the data showed that we might have a couple of hours during the day that might be worth doing enforcement. So I sent officers out there over a couple of different days, targeting those specific times of day that the data was showing, and we ended up only getting one traffic stop after almost two hours of enforcement. In comparison, 58th and Ward, we have numerous crashes along the whole Ward corridor there between 64th and 58th, and we know we have a lot of speed issues through that corridor. So we sent traffic out there to do a unit enforcement, so basically, the entire traffic unit went out with help from a couple patrol guys. And in an hour and a half of enforcement, we made 43 traffic stops for speeding. So just to compare and contrast, an area that we know has crashes, has a lot of violations versus one that's kind of on that marginal side, whether we have enough to devote resources to it or not. Just an overview of traffic stops in Arvada. So this is from our 22 annual traffic review. So every year, we do a review of traffic enforcement efforts, crashes, and DUI enforcement that we look at where things are happening, looking for trends, so we can use that to guide what we're doing the following year. We're not done with the 23 yet, so we should have that hopefully here shortly. So this, most recent data I have for some of this is back from 22. But you can see, most of our traffic stops are occurring on the major arterials, you know, and then of course, up on 86 Parkway, where we do have a lot of speeding up there. This one's kind of hard to see, I apologize for the color, but this is just the speeding tickets. So the other one was all traffic stops, so that's for any violation that an officer may stop somebody. This is for speeding tickets. This is a two-year period, so 22 and 23. Again, the main hotspots you can see are along the major arterials, but really, you know, throughout the whole city, there's enforcement activities happening. And then the alternatives that I mentioned earlier. So, you know, for us, if, if we know that traditional enforcement's not really very feasible, we will start looking at some other things that we can do. Something that we've done recently, we started a couple of years ago and then just resurrected it this year again, is the Heads Up campaign, working closely with other city departments to put this out. It's, it's really a nice program that targets pedestrians, bicycles, and drivers. So it's talking through all three phases of our main roadway users to basically drive appropriately and pay attention to others. But we also do the temporary radar signs, other traffic calming measures. I've drafted letters that I've sent to the schools, we've pushed out through social media. I've sent community letters that HOAs can use to send out to their residents if we have a lot of complaints in a particular era, area, because typically, it is the neighbors that are driving that way. So just a reminder for people to be respectful of your neighbors and pay attention to the speed limits posted in the neighborhood. And then education. So, you know, sometimes it's educating the people that call in. There are issues where people perceive speeding, but it's really because the roadway has curves or it's narrow, and there's parked cars, and cars look faster than they're actually going. There's been times I've sat on people's front porches with the laser and had them point out cars that were going too fast, I would shoot it and show them the speed, and they're like, holy cow, it's like 10 miles an hour less than I thought it was. So that's part of the education. Part of it too is with drivers, you know, we have the neighborhood guy that lives down the street that's always speeding down the road, and we send an officer over to talk to him and say, hey, you know, your neighbors are noticing you're driving much faster than everybody else, you need to slow down. So the education can take up, take on many different forms. And then, you know, with the traffic calming project down on 57th, with the traffic circles doing some education to the general public, what do you do when it's a traffic circle? And that all came from traffic engineering to teach people the rules of the road when they have that type of new calming device that's out there.
Real quick, Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you. Can you go back to that slide? I did have a question for you.
Sure.
And this relates to your, the mobile traffic radar sign, and then this one pictured here. And I'm just curious, because I'm just noticing my own reaction as a driver when I come across those, and we've had a lot of, in my district, a lot of complaints about Lamar and Chase up in the Lake Arbor area north there. And so recently, your mobile radar is there, and it's very striking, it's ominous, and, and it has a bigger presence to me as a driver than this pictured here does?
Right.
And I'm just curious about the, is there any data to back that up, that, that drivers are going to be more responsive to something like your mobile versus this one pictured here? Because that just feels like something you just get used to, right?
Yeah, so I would probably defer to my engineer counterparts, since I'm not an engineer. But I would say, that's one thing that we take into account when we put our trailer out, is there is some calming effect that that trailer has. The good part is, it's recording speeds before it displays the speed. So presumably, if somebody sees they're going too fast, they slow down, we've already captured their speed. But there are areas, and that's, I think that's partly that 55th Avenue, where I saw the speeds are kind of not really hitting my threshold, but I understand when the trailer's out there, it may have a little bit of a calming effect, so I still send somebody to try to do enforcement. I know these, we have several temporary ones that traffic engineering uses, so I'm going to try not to speak out of turn, but it's, they rotate them through the city, they don't leave them there permanently, in part for that reason. And that really is that way with any sign, right? You know, you can put more speed limit signs up, you can put, you know, they used to have children at play signs. Well, studies have shown through the years that people just tune that stuff out, it becomes background noise, and they're really not that effective. So that's why we don't really put a lot of that kind of signage up permanently anymore. Because, well, one, I think every neighborhood has kids in it, so it's not really that informative. But two, it just becomes background noise. So is that fair?
Yeah. I completely agree with what Sergeant Kelly has mentioned. One of the things I know from the research that after six months or seven months, if you have a permanent radar sign, it's not anymore effective. And I think when some speed, the speed trailer you talked about, it's display and informations to the public, it belongs to Arvada Police Department, like law enforcement, versus an informational guideline from the traffic. So definitely, it has some influence on the public.
Okay, thank you. All right, so on to crash data. So I just wanted to make sure we had a perspective of where Arvada sits within the metro area. So this is five years' worth of fatal crashes in the city compared to some of our neighbors. I don't have Denver and Aurora on there. Frankly, theirs are so much higher than ours, that everybody else on this list that made the other ones kind of hard to see the comparison, so I just left them off, so I apologize. I have the numbers, if you want them, I can tell you. But, so in a five-year period for us, we're averaging 3.8 fatals per year. And I've been tracking it since I first got into traffic. We're just over five per year is our average for that since 2012. But really, we had two years that were kind of outliers. We had an 11 fatality year and an eight fatality year. And so that's still kind of skewing our averages over that course of that whole period of time. So really, this 3.8 in the five-year period is pretty close. We're usually at four plus or minus one is pretty typical.
I have a quick question. Is that encompassing of all causes for a fatality?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just fatal crashes in Arvada.
Okay.
Excuse me, a quick question.
Yes.
Of, of those fatalities, just offhand, I'm sure you have this recorded somewhere, what percentage of those involve alcohol or drugs, impairment, those kinds of things?
Give me a couple of slides and I'll tell you.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Well, you also have SBI's?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so this again is from our 2022 annual report. So it's hard sometimes when you're comparing raw crash data to other cities, because it's not really based on population, as you could see with Denver and Aurora. So Denver and Aurora are in this list. This was just a one-year snapshot in 2022. This was a year, we happened to have five fatalities in that year, and we were the fourth fewest of the list that was compared for the rate compared to 100,000 population. So overall, this is all crashes in the city. Again, this is from the 2022 annual report, so primarily east and south, we have heavier concentration of crashes, mainly on Wadsworth Corridor, some on Kipling and Ward and 64th, and then on Sheridan as well. In this year, the black dots are fatal crashes for the report. Every year, we do this to show where the fatals were happening in the year.
Thank you. Councilmember Frey.
Is that the Wadsworth and I-70 intersection?
Yes.
Where the in and outs going?
Yes.
Okay, just checking.
Weren't some of those on the interstate?
Yeah, so the two fatalities were on the interstate.
Yeah, not, they were on the interstate.
So the crashes, the, the, yeah, I'll, I'll show you top locations for a couple of different types of crashes too, so 52nd and Wadsworth is on the list. But, you know, we have 75,000 cars a day going through that intersection as well. And so, you know, I, I don't have the information in here, I can get it if people are interested, but I've had our crime analysis look at, again, not just raw crash rates at an intersection, but based on volume, to, to get more than just, okay, there's X number of crashes at the intersection, but we don't account for the fact that there's 75,000 cars a day coming through there, versus, you know, 72 and 93, where there's maybe 20,000 cars coming through. So this is all crashes, again, this was 2022. I just threw out the top four causal factors in the crash. So rear end is consistent, year over, year over, year is our top cause of a crash. Second is broadside. I have an asterisk on there because the way the state accident form works, it has front to side is what the officers put in for how the collision occurred. It doesn't really account for in this, in these statistics, how those two came together front to side. So it includes a true T-bone accident, 90 degrees, opposing streets coming at each other. It includes left turns, approaching left turns, overtaking left turns. It includes people pulling out from a driveway, pulling out from a business, and getting hit by a, somebody on the main road. So it really is multiple crash types that go into the, the broadside or the front to side category. So it's, take it with a little bit of a grain of salt, because there's a lot of different things. Whereas rear end, pretty much primarily, front to rear is approaches to intersections, you know, intersection-related type crashes. So this is the five-year data with fatal and serious injuries. So over those five years, the top locations were Interstate 70 and the interchange there. It's really on a bunch of different legs of the intersection or the interchange, so we didn't break it down that low, but basically, in that general region around the interstate was the highest. 72 and 93 was next, 64th and Sheridan, and then 77th and Wadsworth. So again, all on state highways, you know, major arterials. The 64th and Sheridan is a little unique. Last year was a, was an interesting year, and our fatal data year over year, other than I-70 and Wadsworth, that's fairly consistent. But again, we have 150,000 cars a day coming through there, and we have higher speeds. It's obviously the highest speed roadway through the city. But 64th and Sheridan last year was unique, we had three fatalities at that intersection last year. Two were pedestrians crossing just north of the intersection outside the crosswalk, and then one was a bicycle that ran the red light at the intersection. So that's where we actually started doing the Heads Up campaign. Once I saw that we had the second pedestrian killed, I was like, okay, we need to do something. For some reason, we have people choosing to make bad decisions at this intersection, and so we started working on the Heads Up campaign over there to hopefully get some education out there. And it's, you know, it's not very far from the intersection that people are crossing against the, against the, instead of using the light.
Quickly, what range of time is this for? How many fatalities?
This is five years.
Five years.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you. Thinking about, in particular, this occurs at 80th and Wadsworth, but I'm sure it occurs other places as well, where the turn light, this is going north, well, heading north, but then heading west, turning onto 80th, where the light is so short, and you know, during rush hour, you have so many cars backed up, does that incur accidents as a result of that? Because I, you know, people get stuck, they don't know what to do, they zip out, you know, and it just becomes a panic situation when that light is so short to turn.
So I have some red light crash data at the end that I'll show you. I, you know, there is, so I, I don't want to, I don't want to break the surprise, but basically, of the crashes, and it was only four years, because we had some trouble with the data in year number five for the red light stuff. We had over 6,000 crashes, and only about 4.7% were red light related, where somebody was cited for a red light violation as the causal factor in the crash. So it is a very low percentage of our total crashes. I know we have done in the past, a lot of red light enforcement at 80th and Wadsworth, because that is one of those intersections that we do get quite a few violations. Because it's a major State Highway, six lanes, there is a pretty good-sized buffer, where the greens don't come for east and west really quickly, so it does allow the intersection to clear, I'm guessing, before we have a lot of crashes. But we do get violations, which is why we are able to do enforcement up there pretty regularly.
All right, thank you.
Yep. So causal factors here for the fatal and SBI's, top is front to side, and I already kind of explained how it's not really deep in the information that that gives me, because it could happen a bunch of different ways. And then I'm not sure, I'm assuming because we stayed, changed the state accident form here in the middle of this five-year period to the new updated version, is why pedestrian is listed a couple of different times, so we have pedestrian and all other pedestrians. If you take those two and combine them, it's actually more than the front to side collisions. And then if you add bikes, it's like 44 is the total number of crashes between bikes and peds that are causing our SBI's and fatal, so that would be the top if we had those combined together. And then some more five-year fatal SBI data. So this is basically the drivers' actions. So again, this is all statistical stuff the officers are putting in, so there is a little bit of, I guess, wiggle room on what the officer is choosing to put as the causal factor. So in this case though, DUI was the top. Careless driving, and then pedestrian are the top three. But then you look right below that, you have aggressive driving, distracted driving. Looked, did not see is a new category, and that's more of, you know, I think is usually a symptom of distracted driving, where people let, make a left turn and say, well, I never saw the car coming. You know, well, it's because you probably weren't paying attention to what you were supposed to be doing. I mean, sometimes you're just preoccupied, maybe not looking at your phone or looking at the fancy stuff in your car, but, so those are somewhat related. In, so I looked at the last two years, so basically 22, 23, and then our fatal that we had this year at 64th and Lamar. And of those 11 crashes, eight of them involve drugs, alcohol, or both. So to answer your question, Mr. Marion. So it is a higher percentage. If you start looking through that whole 12 years that I've been keeping track of the data, it's just over half. But sometimes we don't capture, for an example, if you have a pedestrian who's crossing mid-block, they're hit and killed, we don't always get the toxology back, because it was their fault, we're not prosecuting the case, and so we don't always get the toxology back. So I would say that 52-ish percent of all the crashes since 2012, all the fatal specifically, being alcohol-related is probably a minimum, because looking at the last few that I knew I had good information on, in the last two years, we were eight of 11, so. All right, and then here's the red light data information. So 52nd and Wads was our, one of, well, and Ralston and Wads, those two intersections were our top for red light crashes. And this is again, four years, because we couldn't get the 2019 data to work right. Crime analysis was having difficulty trying to get that to work right. And then 80th and Wads, and then 72nd and Wads. So our four top red light crash locations are on the Wadsworth Corridor. And again, 287 total crashes of injuries or no injuries or minor injuries, any kind of crash, total 287 in that four years out of just over 6,000, I think it was 6,300. I think it was 6,300. Okay, you have questions for me or clarification or?
Councilmember Marriott.
Yes, I have a question. So um, one of the things when we talk about, start talking about traffic, it's kind of a, seems like it defaults quickly to a discussion around speed becomes kind of the, kind of the factor and it, obviously one of the more easily controlled variables. And uh, and it kind of default, you know, kind of the picture everyone's mind is, is that, well, if we got to make it slower here or slower there, or if it was slower here, that wouldn't happen or be less at risk. But I got to think, in your experience as a traffic officer here in the city, that there are also places where um the speed limit may be lower than it needs to be. Not that it's higher than it needs to be, that it might be lower than it needs to be. Do you agree with that? Are there places where, you know, majority of drivers are going significantly over the speed limit? Not because they all decided to be criminal at that spot, but just because the natural factors that happen when you drive lead you to drive differently in that spot?
Yeah, we actually have had that conversation, or I should say, I've had that conversation with traffic engineering. One of the, one of the places honestly was 86 Parkway. Um, you know, I, we, we usually, I, I talked about that, anything over 11 over is kind of what we start looking at doing enforcement. Well, on 86 Park, Parkway, the officers usually use discretion to have their bottom threshold for where they write a ticket actually higher than that. Because so many people, and it's, it's a four-lane divided road with not a lot of cross-traffic. And so it's comfortable for cars to go 45.
Right.
And so I, I actually brought that up uh with Mazodor's predecessor. Is this, I mean, it seems weird to me to recommend that, but that's really, it seems like this corridor can handle 45. And we don't have a ton of crashes up there. Now, we've had some, some significant crashes, you know, when we have people that are driving way, way too fast. But that's that human element that you can't always account for all the time. Um, and so another location that we just talked about recently was the 6300 block of McIntyre. Uh, because that road, after all the construction, south widened everything to four lanes all the way down to Highway 58. You know, 35, when you hit the city limits, it's, the road is designed to handle faster than 35, I guess is the best way to say that. So I think there is an opportunity there potentially to, to do that.
I think about places like, and I know maybe C-dot's in control of this, but Wadsworth, for instance, you know, the speed on Wadsworth largely controlled by the traffic around you, not so much by the speed limit signs. And, and if the road is clear, everybody goes much faster than the speed limit sign. I think it just becomes kind of natural, or I think of 64th West of Quaker, for instance. You know, that's like a lane, like two lanes on a freeway and I, you know, speed limit's 40 or 45 or some, something.
It's 40 because we write a lot of tickets at the dog park out there. But we, again, we have a higher threshold because we recognize you got kind of a long downhill from Highway 93 and it's four-lane divided without much cross-traffic.
Right, right.
People give a little bit more bumper out there when they're doing enforcement, for sure.
And 82nd West of Indiana is another one. You know, I mean, there's a number, number of places around. Um, and you know, I'm, my encouragement would be that as we talk about, and I'll have some, some final thoughts here when we get all done, just some comments, but, but that, that as we talk about, talk about traffic and traffic safety and, and you know, where safety's important, but it's not the only thing. You know, that in a, in a free society, one of the consequences of a free society is there's risks to most everything you do and a lot of the things you do and, and that, uh, you know, slowing everybody down to 20 miles an hour all over the city isn't worth it. Even though it would probably save somebody, it's, it's, it's not worth it. So that we keep in mind that as we go, that the um, we can be wrong on both sides. And, and you know, I kind of think the neighborhoods should probably be 25 because that's the concerns that I hear. And I know in, in, in my neighborhood, my parents' neighborhood, all kinds of places, it's really noticeable when someone goes really fast through, through there. But there's other places where you might get run over if you go, you know, you're, it's clearly out of the thing. And that we look at both, both sides of it, both ways as we do these exercises and talk about traffic and traffic management, that we just keep all those things open.
Yeah, and I'm hopeful with the speed studies that are happening, as far as the actual speed limits, that we can rectify some of that because I know the, the example I gave actually of the, of the, the report that I was just showing as an example from our radar trailer is an area that actually the speed limit is different whether you're going eastbound or westbound in the same segment of roadway, which is very difficult. One, for us to enforce, but two, to expect the public to have a good expectation of what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah.
Mayor Broten Mormon?
Thank you. Uh, I wanted to ask about the traffic circles along 57th. And what, what is the current thinking or what has been the results of that? I certainly appreciate them greatly because I remember before they were there and I was traveling north and south crossing 57th, when you have cars parked along 57th, you can't see. And so it was always a risk to zip across when you're trying to figure out if traffic was coming. And the traffic circles totally eliminate that. So I just, as a driver, greatly appreciate it and feel safer. So I was curious what, what we're learning from that.
Yeah, I think that's a bigger conversation that I know traffic engineering is putting together a response to what that really looked like as an evaluation. From the PD perspective, um, you know, with the lack of understanding for a lot of motorists on what to do there, I think it had a little bit of a negative impact where it gave a false sense of security. And, and this is some feedback I heard from some people in Old Town at one of the bid meetings that tried to walk to and from Old Town, that it gave them a sense of less security because people didn't know how to use the turn, the circle. And so they would come zipping through even though they were supposed to yield. Um, you know, crash data was not significantly different uh before and after from what I can tell. But part of the problem is we had a lot of the infrastructure that was getting hit. Um, and so it's really hard to parse out and say, okay, was this, you know, a crash that was just somebody hitting the infrastructure and then we had to take a report on it? Or was it cars coming together? I know before, especially near Old Town, like on Yukon, we get a lot of crashes of people pulling out from the side streets anyway or hitting parked cars going through there because it is pretty congested. So those kind of things don't really change much. You know, the significance of the crashes that happened in that area were, were pretty mild, mostly property damage before and after. Um, I know speeds, we, I worked um with the resident down there at 57th and Dudley repeatedly because he was always complaining about speeds and we went down there and made tons of effort to do speed enforcement. And the speed studies didn't really support a lot of excessive speed and us doing enforcement was not ever very fruitful. So, you know, I, I guess ultimately we'll let traffic engineering come to their conclusions after reviewing all the data. I think whatever we do, it's, it's kind of like what Mr. Marriott was saying. It's, it's got to be thought, thought out and done for um a reason that helps all the roadway users understand what's going on and make it safer for them and not confusing. And I think unfortunately, and part of it's just because it was new for us, but um I think part of it, it was confusing to a lot of people.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
So, you know, we've talked about this a lot, but you know, I hear from you that there's, people are overstating the concern. I mean, that's basically summarizing it. But where is the problem? Because there is traffic, there are fatalities, there are SBI's. It's not always speed, but where are your problems and how are we addressing those?
Yeah, so that's what's really unique, I think. Other than I-70, um, our fatalities especially change every year. Um, you know, I, we mentioned in the, in the last workshop, um, you know, we had two fatalities on Oberon Road near Estes in one year. And it was because a tractor was coming down under the railroad tracks on his way to the Harvest Festival, Festival Parade, lost control of the tractor, tipped over and was killed. Um, so like, that's not something that is an infrastructure problem or enforcement problem. You know, as you saw on the earlier slide, really pedestrians and bikes are involved in the highest number of all those different causal factors. Uh, and some of those are personal choices. So I don't know, um, again, I'm not an engineer, so I, I don't know if there's design issues that can be done. But when you're talking on a major highway, I know we get a lot of pedestrian fatalities along the Wadsworth corridor. And even in areas like 58th, um, that has a signalized intersection with fully functional crosswalks on all four legs and an underpass at the Ralston Creek Trail, and people still choose to cross mid-block and get hit and killed. So I think that's where some of the education piece comes back in with like that heads-up campaign where we can start impacting people's behavior and their choices. So I, I guess, you know, I don't have a definitive answer on that we have one or two things that's going to just fix those issues. And it's, it's one of those things I struggle with a lot too because I look at us compared to other cities and not that we should set our bar, you know, too low. Uh, but we are relatively low compared to a lot of, a lot of other cities that are similar size and similar makeup. And so to me, that means overall our safety is pretty good. And that when we don't have, other than the interstate, we don't have one intersection that every year is our top crash location, our top fatality location, our top SBI location. You know, it's spread throughout. I think that's a good indicator that really we don't have the one just, or two or five glaring problems that we have to address immediately. It really is looking at the whole system, seeing where we can make improvements throughout the whole system and incrementally make those changes to improve safety where we find areas that are not.
Wouldn't you say one of your top is DUI?
Sure, yeah.
I'm sure we can do something about that because I remember at one point we didn't even have DUI officers. I don't know, do we still have any?
We have two, yes.
Which is great. Um, but I mean, that is somewhere where you can make an impact and, and look for. So.
Agreed.
And continue to enforce, you know, and look in that, that direction. But I, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, I don't want to be left with the impression that we're just chasing ghosts when there's not a problem. You know, people have a perceived problem. And I know you, you use data to do that. But my thing is, is I'll always say it, one life's too many. It doesn't matter because it's one day, it's my wife, it's your sibling or whoever. Um, it, it's one too many for no matter who it's for. So, you know, if we're that low, then why can't we get to zero?
Yeah, well, in 2010, we were at zero.
Okay, so see, we got one here.
But that was the year before I took over as the traffic sergeant and we had a fatality like week two.
See, there's some, there's a problem now. But I, you can't, you can't really judge, you know, the stupidity of pedestrians doing dumb things. I, I, there's a couple of those that happen, I mean, unfortunately. But if we make every effort, both from engineering as well as in law enforcement, then, um, you know.
Absolutely.
That's something we would need to continue to focus on every day.
Yeah, agreed.
Councilmember Frey.
Are we looking at the, doing the civilian crash investigation?
Uh, yes. So um, we tried a process in the fall. We ended up, we had two candidates and they ended up not passing backgrounds. Uh, so we started, we posted it again. I now have, uh, we got 40 applications, I have 18 going to PHQ. And so I'm hoping to get at least two out of that. We have four positions total. If I could get two quality candidates hired, um, that's my goal out of this process. So hopefully, within a few months before summer, which is always our busiest crash time, hopefully we can get them up on, up and running.
Uh, thank you. And also, we talked about doing the speed safety camera, using techni, technology for enforcement. Have we also started looking at red light cameras again?
Um, I know that I saw the study that was done previously, um, so I have that information. I, uh, I mean, the hard part for me with red light cameras is we don't get a lot of red light crashes. And so I don't know how, and the, the, some of the research I've seen, it actually increases rear end crashes when you have an intersection that's got the red light enforcement, which is our top crash type. So I worry that it might have the, the opposite effect if we're talking specific red lights. I know as we're talking, you know, we're trying to get with our joint effort between traffic engineering and the PD, we're trying to get an overall picture of traffic in the city first and then we can start targeting. I know, uh, I met with some of the C-dot folks about the Avis system that they're starting to do.
Right.
Um, and so there's a bunch of requirements to do corridors uh through city ordinance to designate this as a corridor where you can do enforcement. So there's a lot of steps that need to be done. You know, I, I think if I, if you're asking my opinion, I had to choose between the two. I think the speed would be more impactful.
Okay.
Especially for our citizens that are experiencing, you know, it's easy for us to say, well, it doesn't hit my threshold, so therefore we're not coming out. And they're like, well, even though there's only one or two cars an hour that are coming through that are going too fast, it still impacts them.
Right.
Whereas if we had something like that, we may be able to put it into places that would have an impact. So if I had to pick between the two, I'd prioritize looking at the enforcement.
Okay.
Um, but it is, there's quite a few steps that would have to happen before we get there for sure.
Thank you. And when you're looking at some of these hot areas where people are complaining a lot, do we ever overlay it with areas that might be of high pedestrian, like schools? And does that take a higher priority in response?
Yes, so that's, that's why I have that as my second tier. After we go high crash locations, the second tier is schools.
Okay.
Um, you know, and frankly, enforcement in school zones can be difficult at times because many of our school zones are very short.
Right.
Distances. And so in order for you to do enforcement, one, you have to be able to sit on the side of the road where you have a clear line of sight of cars coming. Uh, and then you have to have enough distance to where they've already passed the flashers so that we're not shooting cars right as they come out, pass the flasher. They've got to have passed it for a little, you know, 100 feet. So we can say, no, you were fully in the zone. Uh, and then we have to be able to get them, um, you know, on laser before they get to our location. So many of the school zones are a challenge. Um, you know, oftentimes, especially our school resource officers are, are a huge help for us, just being visible in the school zones. Because oftentimes, and I'm sure you guys know, if there's a cop car out there, people tend to behave a little better uh with traffic stuff. So even just being present in the area oftentimes acts as a deterrent for that speeding, even though we're not technically doing enforcement.
Right, yeah, I live a block from Seacrest and we have, we just this week had, and I think you mentioned it, a three-car hit-and-run. You know, we've scooped up dead dogs, we've seen kids dodge out of the way. And we still haven't had any traffic calming work done there. And so I'm just wondering how we prioritize some of those areas that we see? Because we see tons of hot points around the, the community, but I'm wondering, where's the threshold? Does it have to be a severity of an accident that we intervene early and, and deviate from kind of our planning and our, our data? Where is that, that level?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's not a hard and fast rule for sure. A lot of it is based on, you know, experience. Um, we, you know, the five traffic officers I have now have all been in traffic for a period of time. Some of them 10-plus years. And so, you know, they tend to know the locations they go to. So in, in some cases, that's where we have to remind them, hey, don't forget about this place over here. Um, the good part for us in a traffic unit is we are getting a traffic sergeant back. So we have, you know, moved that traffic sergeant position out and put it back in patrol. Um, we now are bringing it back this year. So here in the next month or so, we should have a full-time traffic sergeant back, hopefully. Um, and that will help because really that's when the directed patrol from the traffic unit specifically is really maximized. You know, because when we had traffic officers out there, they, they mean well, but they're not really necessarily as focused on certain things, they've got their own areas they like to go to, they know, well, I had a crash here last week, I'm going to go do enforcement there. Uh, whereas when you have a sergeant that's full-time traffic, they'll be able to really help direct them. So I'm hoping this year, um, we'll be able to do that, just like that enforcement I showed you. You know, really that's a traffic sergeant going to be coordinating those. So we can really, you know, start hitting saturations in areas that really need them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
I just appreciate both of you guys. You've been helping me out, out west, you know, I got noisy people out there sometimes about things. And, you know, the data-driven decision that you give kind of calms the citizens to show the proof. That trailer is absolutely effective. I, it is. I know you threw it out on I-70, well, you might not have, but your predecessor might have threw it out on I-70 and plus C-dot was like, what the hell's this thing out here? Which actually was interesting because it was in a spot that brought some data that was shared with C-dot that was amazing data off the interstate. But uh, you know, you, you all come in with a data-driven discussion, no matter what we say up here. We appreciate that you look at it, that detail. Understanding those perceptions that we have to work through with our citizens. I appreciate all of you, you know, showing up and, and really committed to our communities to, to do the right thing and to help them where, where, where you, your, your services are needed, right? So keep doing that, keep doing the good work. And I know you're strapped for resources and so forth, but you do what, what you can and um I appreciate all of you, so thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Councilmember?
Marriott.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments at the conclusion of this. Because I think we're there, right? Are we done with? You got another section? Okay, okay, I'm going to wait.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the next step is going to be uh continued speed management program in key initiatives. So there are four items, continued community education and awareness. As I said, that, as we all say, that this is very important part of the speed management program. Uh, explore mobile trailer enforcement option. As I said, uh, you know, it's going to be a, we are hoping that a lot of times we hear from our citizens, hey, there are still five people are traveling way higher than the, we expect them to see travel. I think definitely that will bring a next level of awareness with this enforcement. Advanced self-enfor, enforcing, enforcing a roadway assessment. I'll go over two slides on that particular initial outcomes. Uh, that will also address some of the questions that have been asked to Sergeant Kelly. Conduct project prioritization process. As we discussed, that we cannot just sit down and wait for something to happen before we take an action. I, we completely hear you, so we would like to take some proactive action. Uh, again, at the end of the day, um, we, we will communicate a staffing and funding requirements through the budget process as we move through. So the next one is a quick example of community education and awareness that as a public works and as well as City of Arboretto Police works and as well as city of Arvada Police Department, we are working together. As Sergeant Kelly mentioned, that we are also working on a postcard could be sent to speed data findings to do meet the threshold for police enforcement. Messaging our community would be included, example would be a good neighbor, watch for pedestrian, obey traffic signs. The last one is specific follow-up information about what we did and what we found in a year, also included, allowing the links to the resource. We are planning to provide a comprehensive yearly, you know, results to share with our communities, so that they understand that we are moving in the right direction, showing that things are getting better over a period of time. The next one is actually a quick example of the speed trailer or a speed enforcement camera that we discussed. Initially, we are expecting that the camera will cost $30,000 just the purchasing the equipment. It's going to be $250,000 ongoing administrative and operating expenses. There are a lot of layers into that, I'm just giving you a high-level cost. Definitely there are some challenges and also opportunities, which kind of aside, sits both together. Challenges is the staff time, system limitation with multi-lane corridors, but we have a lot of complaints that we hear from our neighborhood where we have only two lanes of roadway. So definitely, there are some challenges maybe on the, a high, high classified road, but not necessarily local or collector roads. System limitation with motorcycle detection is going to be an issue, but opportunity around the clock deployment, it's going to add some more coverage, and definitely we are going to add, we are going to get a lot of more data, that's something will help us to make, make and take an informed decision as we move forward. This is the one I was talking about, the self-enforcing roadway assessment at the transportation system level. So the map on the right you are seeing, we overlaid several information over here. So basically, what we did actually, if any roadway segment is longer than one-fourth of a mile, we identified on our system. And there is approximately, if I remember correctly, the map is a little bit not clear. On the top right, you can see there are maybe 168 segments that we identified in our city is pretty straight, no natural curvature, is longer than one-fourth of a mile. And what we did also, we, as we, as I mentioned before, that we tracked all the citizens' complaint, and you might be able to see that we overlaid almost 93 or 96 citizens' complaint, pretty much lineup where exactly this lack of self-enforcing roadway geometry is. So it's pretty, pretty reasonably where we exactly see all this problem. And again, Councilmember Ferrey, as you asked about the schools, we actually overlaid the schools' location and some of the vulnerable users that we have to identify those priority also. We also overlaid the emergency, primary emergency route from the fire departments. So pretty much every, lot of different factors that should be considered to prioritize the area where exactly we can take some proactive action, not to wait for something to happen, actually. And where we can do some, as Councilmember Pfeffer was talking about, where exactly we can walk on those corridor, identify the most effective low-cost improvement, provide the next level of safety to make it more safer. So if I go to the next slide, which is, if we move from one quarter of a mile to half a mile, you will see that the total segments comes around 56, if I, if I'm, if I'm looking at correctly, and the total citizens' complaint also reduced by quite a bit, but not as much as we expect to see. So, this is our initial approach to understand the system level gaps from the roadway geometry points of view, where exactly our vulnerable users are, where exactly our emergency routes are, where exactly citizens are complaining. So this information, once we take it to the next level, and we should be able to roll out some project and prioritization and low-cost and medium-cost improvement as we move forward. Again, it's combination of Arvada Police Department and, you know, Public Works Department, because one thing is, one approach is not going to manage this speeding issue, because there are so much variables into that. So definitely, this coordinated effort with enforcement and with this approach, definitely, we can expect a safer community as we move forward in future. I think that's the last slide I have.
Wonderful, all right. Councilmember Marietta, I believe you had some comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. So, you know, when we look at this, I think, you know, the, in 10 years, I've heard very, over and over and over, kind of the same complaints, and, you know, it's, traffic volume is one, and, and traffic speed is another one that's, that's very, very common. And it seems like, you know, if you live on a street that four cars a day drives down, and all of a sudden it becomes six, you immediately say, "Oh my God, the traffic's just gotten ridiculous here." And if you live where they get 10,000 a day, and it goes to 15,000, you do the same thing, you know? So it kind of is universal across the city. I think the traffic speeds inside of neighborhoods is a real quality of life concern. And I think if we're going to make a mistake on any of this, or try something, what we ought to be trying is trying to address that quality of life concern. So, you know, if our speed limit is maybe lower than it should be, it should be in neighborhoods, and it shouldn't be in other places. I think when you look at the data, it shows me that the crash data, the fatalities, the bodily injuries, that speeding's almost not a concern at all. In fact, only a very small number of any of those things were really related directly to speeding. There's a, a big variety of factors, and I think Mr. Pfeiffer hit it right on the head. Intoxication is a real concern, and that's really the big one. And, and, you know, there's been, over my whole adult lifetime, there's been this concerted effort to, to eliminate, you know, drunk driving, intoxicated driving, and, and I think those efforts have to continue, but, but clearly, there's no such thing as making it go away completely, because it can, it continues to happen, you know, over 40 years later, it's, it's, it's still happening. So I would encourage us, as we take, as we take a look at these things, to remember that we're a safe community. We don't have consistent problems with either accidents or deaths or significant injuries. We have them, but, but they're, but they're spread throughout, and it's hit or miss as, as each year goes. I think it's fine to have lofty goals, like Dr. Cog has their Goal Zero where nobody ever gets hurt on the road, but, but that's, that's a, that's a lofty aspiration, that's not really practical, because no place has, has done it. And I wouldn't want to live in a place that did, because the cost to doing it would be such that you couldn't tolerate to live there. I mean, you could take away all the cars, nobody would get killed by a car, but can you live like that? Of course not. So, I, I think, I think what I'm trying to say is, is really that we should look at this as a service organization from a customer service standpoint, and realize that our customers are looking for certain things. They're looking for safety or perceived safety within their neighborhoods, they're looking for quality of life in their neighborhoods, so, you know, that might be the perceived safety as much as anything. But they're also looking to be able to go the places they want to go, go the places they need to go, not be frustrated by being stuck in traffic, you know, and if we lower speed limits, we're going to, you know, the number of cars on the road gets bigger, and we're more susceptible to that. And particularly, I think, you know, we talk about dance around the issue of red light cameras or speed enforcement cameras or things like that. You know, the early efforts of that, things from 20 years ago and whatnot in other places, not, not so much here, I think were, were abusive to, to, to residents, you know? I, I got one one time on Spear Boulevard, right over by Denver Country Club, where of course, that's where the rich and powerful in Denver live, and, you know, as, as we all have set up here, we all have our old parochial concerns about the traffic in our neighborhood or next to our neighborhood, or, you know, whatever. And that's what that was, and, and that camera would flash as fast as cars drove by, you know, and they were, they were collecting, collecting all kinds of fines. I think we've got to be, we have to be careful not to, not to just reduplicate those things from the past that maybe weren't appropriate. You know, I think that little graphic you provided that shows, you know, people can get a reminder, "Hey, you're driving too fast in this place," or something like that, I suppose that's okay. But it comes at a great cost, great cost in, in the cost of the technology, the deployment of the technology and the, and the staffing it takes to do that. And in the absence of significant problems, it's really hard to go make those types of, of investments when we've got lots and lots of other things to consider, so.
I, I, I completely wholeheartedly agree with you, and that's why we came, we are working on a speed management program, how we, what we can manage for our community.
Right.
Understanding the true needs while we are trying to make their safe, safer and equality of life, as you said. We completely agree. If, if you go back, if you go back to the FSWA Safety Management Program, that's actually developed last 20, 10, 15 years because of that reason, actually. It's something we can, we cannot chase, something we'd never be able to achieve, but we can make every effort every day to make it safer, and that's, the effort has to continue.
Right, right.
Yep, in a meaningful way. I completely agree.
And so, and I would say, in turn, I completely agree with you, and I completely agree with the approach you're taking, and encourage you to, you know, continue, continue with that approach, and, and for the, for the police department who's out there doing a great job, you know, to continue doing that, I think we need to be vigilant, but I, I don't look at this as a, a significant problem for Arvada, and the biggest problem I see of it is just people's quality of life with their perception of the speed that's happening in their neighborhoods, and, and that's really where we ought to be putting our efforts, so, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you very much. I think the last things I would like to mention, that is the last thing, balancing the safety and mobility has to be there. If we can just focus on safety one way, then everybody's going to slow down, then we will frustrate people, so that is the biggest challenge of our life. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. All right, so with that, I will close the workshops portion of our agenda this evening. Thank you to the entire team who worked very hard on pulling all of those materials together. And I will open up second public comment portion. Is there anyone in chambers this evening who would like to do second public comment? Seeing none, Ms. Rush Nanonzum? Okay, I will open it up to reports from City Council. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Yeah, just want to, a couple of things. The team out there went and dealt with some traffic issues out in Candellas. We had a young boy that, that got killed out there at an intersection, and the team did a great job speaking with the community, and had some action items, just like you heard tonight. The crosswalk was implemented 12, 18 hours after the meeting, and, and actually doing, going out in the field was pretty impressive. And, Councilmember Davis joined me in that, so I appreciate her jumping in and, and dealing with the shots that I was getting shot at, not physically, but verbally. And then, last Saturday, Councilmember Davis joined me as well at the Fire Station 9, where they introduced their newest and new colors of their fire trucks, the black and red, brush fire truck that they will use to help mitigate some of the quick response in the wildland fires out there. They're, it's, it's a really neat truck, and had a pretty good-sized crowd out there, and Councilmember Davis and I got to push it into its spots and put, transfer buckets of water from the old truck to the new truck as, as a transfer of knowledge and all sorts of ceremonial things, but it was, it was a good event, and it was well-attended, so, good for them, and they did a good job.
Excellent. All right, Councilmember Davis, we'll go to you then.
Thank you, Mayor. So there was a lot going on. I attended the Arvada Park Advisory Committee slash Arvada Golf Advisory Committee meeting, and we found the nexus between parks and golf, and that is water. And so, just the two management officers, Steve Augustusson and Joe Coonsy, showed us where they come together and how they are apart, so that was really a neat thing. I went to the Leyden Rock Emergency Planning Meeting, and the chief left, but I just wanted to say congratulations to the team. John left too, everybody left. John Ferrisi was there, he took some shots, man, he's a trooper. I, I really congratulate him. The commanders, both commanders were out there. I was really, I was chomping at the bit, and Lori was holding my arm back, but I wanted somebody to talk about incident command, and they did. And I think just going through that incident, incident command structure put some of the residents' minds at ease. And then last but not least, reading at Sierra Elementary. It was reading across the nation day, and that was so much fun, and I actually read to Rachel Kay's son, and I should say that I didn't really read, the books they gave me were a little too elementary for the fourth grade class. Those kids are smart, they're articulate, they asked a lot of questions, and they had a lot of great ideas, and they knew more about government than I thought they did or should at their ages. And if this is what our future is all about, and these are the kids that are leading us into our future, we are in good hands. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, I attended a memorial service in Thornton at the St. John's Lutheran Church for Nex Benedict. Nex was a Two-Spirit Binary student who died in Oklahoma a couple weeks ago, after, a day after being hit by a fellow student. And during that service, I couldn't help but not remember back to 1998, when I was 27-years-old, and a 22-year-old, Matthew Shepherd, was killed in Wyoming. Words matter, bullying matters, and that can hurt, and that can take lives. And we've seen in some of our neighboring communities, and tonight we heard some public comments about hate speech. Council, I will be sharing with you a statement that I would like to ask you to consider signing on to. I think as leaders of this community, we need to stand against hate speech and its impact, and so I will be asking you to consider signing on to that. So thank you for that consideration.
All right, thank you. So, any reports from the city manager?
Just that there is not a council meeting next Monday night, a few of you will be at the National League of Cities, and we'll be back after that.
Perfect, thank you. And from the city attorney?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
All right. Do we have any review of future workshops presentations? Other than that, I think we're, sorry. All right, we're good.